Good evening, folks. Thank you for being here tonight. We are reconvening for a closed session. There is nothing to report, so I'd like to adjourn the special meeting at 6:05. And I want to call the regular meeting of the City Council to order at 5:05. Would also like to request the clerk to read the Metro replay schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, February 24th at 1:00 p.m., and Sunday, February 26th at 9:00 p.m. It is being closed captioned. It will be live webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests you limit your presentations to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the room and provided to the assistant city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item.
If you could call the roll, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Nguyen. Councilmember Hume. Councilmember Suin is absent. Vice Mayor Detrick.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here.
And next item. That would take us over to the Pledge of Allegiance.
And we're very privileged to have tonight amongst us a hero. I'd like to ask him to step forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Shannon Horn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. If you could have a seat, we'll tell your story in a little bit. At the beginning of every regular meeting, we always like to have a moment of silence, so if you can join the City Council in a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. We have an agenda in front of us. I'd like to entertain a motion.
So move.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Pose. Attention. Next item.
We have no closed-session items under Section 3, which takes us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, which I'd be asking Mr. Shannon Horn if he could please come back forward up to the podium again. For we have a presentation of a certificate of recognition to Shannon Horn for his lifesaving efforts stopping a passenger from jumping from a plane mid-flight.
Many of you have heard this in the news already, but it was flagged by Councilman Hume, the good deed that you did, and he had asked the City Council to adopt a resolution recognizing your heroism. So, Councilman Hume.
Please meet you. I just want to say, ladies and gentlemen, that when things happen in life on a split-second moment and you have to make that decision of what kind of person you're going to be in that instance, this man stood up and he proved himself to be a pretty exemplary person as far as his selflessness and the act that he did. So let me read it to you. Whereas on November 2nd, 2016, passengers in flight attendants aboard an Air Canada flight to Brisbane, Australia sensed an escalating danger as one of the passengers was becoming increasingly agitated, refusing to settle in and sit down. And whereas the restless passenger then tried to escape the plane in mid-flight, trying to open the rear door of the plane at 36,000 feet. And whereas Shannon Horn was seated close to the exit and leapt into action when he noticed the commotion running over to pull the man's hands off the exit lever and then tackling the man to the ground. And whereas Shannon Horn was traveling with his newlywed wife, Anna, and his act of heroism during this crisis situation earned him the moniker "The Honeymoon Hero." Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby recognizes and commends Shannon Horn for his courage, perseverance, presence of mind, and valiant efforts displayed on November 2nd, 2016 to intervene and avert tragedy insuring the safety of numerous others. Thank you very much for your quick thinking.
You guys want to... Before any pictures taken, let the whole entire City Council come on down as well.
I think we're all going to come down and get a picture with you, if you don't mind.
Is your wife here, by the way? Would you come down, Anna? You're the other half of the honeymoon couple.
I would like to thank City of Elk Grove for this and just wanted to really give the praise to God that He allowed me to act in a way that was a heroic act and hopefully others can do the same if they're put in that situation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. This is one of the best stories, right? We live amongst heroes and there are many others who have done good deeds as well, but whenever we have an opportunity, we like to recognize Elk Groveans, and this is one of those exceptional incidents. Next item is a proclamation recognizing Spade A. This is requested by the Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor?
And as Vice Mayor Detrick comes down, if I can invite Katie Shippen with the Sacramento Area Animal Coalition to receive that.
It's an honor to be...
You're welcome.
It's an honor to be able to give you this proclamation on behalf of the City of Elk Grove. Spade A, USA, 2017. Getting a pet spayed and neutered can reduce the number of homeless pets, improve a pet's health, reduce unruly pet behavior, and save the overall cost of pet care. In the United States, there are an estimated six to eight million homeless animals entering animal shelters every year, with barely half the animals being adopted. And the problem with companion animal overpopulation costs the taxpayers of this country more than $1 billion annually through animal control programs aimed at coping with the millions of unwanted dogs and cats. Spaying and neutering cats and dogs have been shown to drastically reduce cat and dog overpopulation. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove here proclaims February 28th, 2017, as Spade A, USA, 2017, and calls upon the people of Elk Grove to observe the day and participate in local activities offered February 26th, 2017 throughout the region by having their own cats and dogs spayed or neutered, by sponsoring the spaying and neutering of another person's cat or dog, or by contributing to those organizations that sponsor or advocate spay and neutering services. Sign this 22nd day of February, 2017 by the entire City Council.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And if you could expand upon that, we'd love it.
Sure, yeah. So Sacramento Area Animal Coalition is an organization that's been around for a couple decades now. It's an all-volunteer-run organization, and what they do is they recruit local veterinary hospitals to provide low-cost spay and neuter, rabies vaccine, and parasite prevention for low-com individuals. They also have programs for feral cat colonies as well, so they provide a lot of services to our community that would, for communities, or pets in our community that would otherwise go unnoticed. So it reduces the amount of animals going into shelters. It reduces the amount of animals euthanized. It also improves the lives of pets of people that own those pets because it can be very stressful if they're not able to provide veterinary care for them. Thank you so much.
Next item is a presentation, right?
That is correct, and I'd like to invite up Kristoff Dobson, the Director of Policy and Planning with Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District, to give a presentation on the proposed five-year rate plan and an update on the Echo Water Project.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Kristoff Dobson. I'm the Director of Policy and Planning for Regional SAN, we call ourselves. That's our short name. And tonight, I'm just going to be doing a presentation on our proposed rate increase. Regional SAN is the wastewater service provider for the region and the City of Elk Grove as well. So just a quick overview of our presentation today, or this evening. We are going to talk a little bit about the services that Regional SAN provides as a regional service provider, and then how that relates back to the local service provider for sewer services. A little bit about the drivers, why our rates are going up, the rate plan itself, so you can see what the rate increases are, and then also, probably most importantly, the process that people need to go through if they're interested in lodging a protest and/or coming and speaking at the public hearing. So we've been around since 1982, providing safe wastewater conveyance and treatment for residents and businesses throughout the region. This is a map of our service area. We serve more than 1.4 million people. The wastewater treatment plant is actually located not too far from here. It's west of Franklin Boulevard and then just north of the city. And you can see a picture there, an aerial view. It's looking, to the top of the picture would be looking west, the Sacramento River is on the west, and then on the left side of the picture, or the south, is Laguna Boulevard and the Apple Complex there. The total property is 3,200 acres. It's a very large site that people don't really even realize is sitting there. Of that, there's about 1,000 acres or so that are actually the active process area. It's got to operate 24/7/365. We cannot shut down at any point in time because we're continually taking in wastewater and treating it safely and discharging it to the Sacramento River. So here's how we fit in. Regional SAN has the treatment plant, and we also have the large interceptor pipes that bring sewage to the treatment plant. The interceptor pipes are up to 10 feet in diameter, so that's big enough to drive a car through. Then there are local sewer service providers that collect the wastewater from homes and businesses and send it into these larger pipes, and there are four of those agencies: the City of Folsom, City of Sacramento, City of West Sacramento, and then the rest, which is really about 70% of Regional SAN's service area, is collected by the Sacramento Area Sewer District. And you see that the newer cities in the region, because the Sacramento Area Sewer District was there before those cities became incorporated, those are the ones that are served by the Sacramento Area Sewer District, and Elk Grove, of course, is one of those. So we are a very highly regulated industry. We have to have a permit, a discharge permit, to discharge to the river, and we get a new one every five years. It's issued by the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and this permit dictates the quality of the water that we can put out into the river. The document itself is literally about an inch thick that is describing all the requirements that we have to meet, and we can't not meet any of those. If we do, we are in noncompliance. We can be fined, you know, all the way up to lawsuits. So we basically have to meet those requirements. We happen to be the largest inland discharger west of the Mississippi River, so we're pretty large in the United States in terms of wastewater. So we also happen to be discharging to kind of the top end of the delta, which is a very sensitive waterway, so we kind of have a big target on our back. And in 2010, concerns over delta, the health of the delta and the ecosystem, were kind of pointed in a variety of directions, but one of them was at us, and so we ended up with a very strict permit in 2010, and that's kind of leading to the rate increases. So that permit requires us to do a lot of things that we can't do with the current plant in terms of the quality of water that we discharge. So the project that we have put together is called the Echo Water Project. It's going to cost between $1.5 and $2.1 billion. You can see this map shows some of the projects that are going to be done. There's a series of smaller projects that all fit together to do this. Pieces of the existing plant will remain in place, but a lot of it is going to be rebuilt. It's been described as driving down the road and rebuilding your engine while you're driving down the road, because we have to have the current plant be operating continuously while we build this new plant at the same time. Amazingly, so it's got to be operational by 2023, and amazingly, the size and complexity of this project, it's still under budget and on schedule, so we're very proud of that. We do a lot of outreach, very proactive in getting the word out, and this Echo Water Project, people need to understand where their rates are going, so we've been doing a lot in that regard: newsletters, website, social media, you name it. We've worked a lot on getting the information out so people are just aware of what this project is and what it entails. We are doing as best a job as we can to keep the rates low. Back in 2010, when we got that permit, the estimated monthly rate, how much you would pay for a month of sewer service in 2021 was going to be $62. In 2014, we had developed a pilot plant, a small miniature plant, that we could actually test all the technologies and optimize which technologies we could use to still meet the requirements we had to meet. We were able to select some good but cheaper technologies that were able to bring our rates, our projections, down to $50 per month. And then in 2015, we received the largest state revolving fund loan in the nation, a $1.6 billion loan, and the key thing there is that the interest rate on that loan is about 1.7%, and that ends up saving about a half a billion dollars in interest, just interest payments alone. So it was a huge impact to the region, and that's subsidized by the state and the federal government. So that brought things down even lower. We've had a number of cost savings on a smaller scale on the individual projects, but together, you put that all together along with the careful project oversight, and we've been able to bring that projected rate down to $39. So it's not great that we're still raising rates, but they're a lot lower than we expected them to be. So these are the details. This is what the rate plan actually looks like. It's a five-year rate increase, a total of $4 in that five years. So it's a dollar each for the first three years and then 50 cents in the last two years. And when we get to the end, so right now, we're at $35 a month. We will be at $39 a month, and we're thinking that's the end of the increases, at least for a period of time. Obviously, there's inflation and other things that happen with our costs, but we're getting to the end of those increases. We did, as I mentioned, we do a lot of outreach as part of the Proposition 218 process. This is a legal requirement we have to do when we raise rates. We put together a kind of a newsletter that's gone out to every single property owner in our service area, so they get the information. It explains what the costs are and why they're there, and also provides information on how to make a protest. We have done City Council presentations like this one, other regional meetings throughout the region, and one more point I want to make on this, that it's in the newsletter as well, but we do have a low-income rate assistance program. It is as much as $150 a year for a customer to get back. It's either a reduction in their bill or else they get rebates, depending on where they're getting their billing from. So that's a nice thing to see. You can call that number and find out if you're eligible for it. Here's the information on the public hearing. It is downtown at the County Board of Supervisors Chambers, 9:30 on Wednesday, March 8th, and if you're interested in speaking at that, you can head down there. And with that, I'll answer any questions you have.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Christopher, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Maybe you alluded to it, but I'd like to know, what does Southern California contribute, since that's water that ultimately goes into the delta that can help their needs as well? Do they contribute anything directly or indirectly?
Not directly. I think, as you said, probably indirectly in the sense that that loan that we got saved a great deal of money, and it's partially subsidized by the state government. So in some way, some, you know, some portion is being paid by the state, but nothing directly.
So there's no direct impact on the cost that they pay for water that would help subsidize this?
That's correct. There isn't.
That's wrong.
Well, there's, I mean, you've got to look at all of the service providers that discharge into various rivers and waterways. They each have different requirements that they have to do, and, you know, I would agree that we got singled out, but that's kind of how it's gone.
Okay.
Member Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on Vice Mayor's point there, Kristoff kind of touched on this, but when this upgrade is done, the water that will be put into the river will be at a cleaner, by a parts-per-million standpoint, than most well water is tested to. And so it really will be high-quality, usable water. And so something that we've been looking at for the past couple of years and will continue to look at is how do we monetize that discharge? Because we, in the region, a lot of that water originated as groundwater from this region. We paid to pump it. We paid to use it. We paid to clean it, and now we're giving it away for free. And so some of that will be captured for the South County Ag Water Recycling Program, but also if we can look at how we can monetize what goes out into the river, I think there's some merit there, because it is being counted towards surface water flows that then the other water purveyors can draw down upon.
I agree.
Yes. We do have an active water recycling program, and we are able to at least recover some of those costs through that, and we have some pretty large projects coming down in the pipeline.
Councilwoman Nguyen.
Are your materials in the various different languages?
You know, that's a question I might ask. So the question is, I share in sergeants with our Public Affairs Office. The question is, do we have them in multiple languages? The flyers, are they...
Okay. Yeah, if you're sending them out to homeowners and because of diverse community here, I highly recommend that you work with somebody to get them into different languages.
Yeah, I know we do that a lot for our local projects, but I don't think that we've done it on this, so we'll make a note of that for sure. Thank you.
The only I'd like to add is I would suggest that you tap into the school districts because they have that personnel and the resources available for collaboration, either Elk Grove Unified or Sacramento City Unified. The other thing I wanted to highlight is what Councilman Hume had mentioned. That was discussed on the board, and he was very articulate in pushing that forward, so well noted. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item.
Take a section 5. Our public comment. Pardon me.
Public comment. And our first speaker is Betty Williams. After Betty Williams is Caroline Cabias.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Betty Williams, and I am the President of the Greater Sacramento NAACP. And I stand here before you concerned regarding your hiring practices when it comes to diversity as it reflects the City of Elk Grove. I do understand that Elk Grove has been a city for 15 years, and it has approximately 60% of minorities in the city. However, if I go through your administrative, I do not see that reflection within the city. If I look at the school district and its report and how it reflects the students in the city, it will tell you a story that not only is Elk Grove has a minority majority, but it will increase in later years. I am asking you to do an audit. I would like to see the reflection of the city when it comes to management, hiring, diversity, disparity when it comes to gender practices, contracting. I look at your numbers and how it reflects the law enforcement and how it doesn't reflect, again, your city. The fire department, 15 years, and it appears that you don't have one African-American. I have to wonder, how are you using your outreach? How are you using your net? How far is your net going? The city needs to do better, and I don't understand why it isn't. I understand that your city manager is appointed by the City Council, and for the most part, the city manager is responsible for the hiring of most of the employees or particularly management. And so I don't know if you have policies in place, but maybe you need to look at those policies or those existing policies to see how or if you have language to help with the employment of a diverse community such as yourself. I'm just not understanding of a city that's been here for 15 years, how you have not been able to find at least one African-American in the fire department.
We don't run the fire department.
And, oh, I didn't realize you can talk to me. Okay.
Yeah, we don't run the fire department. That's the Community Services District.
Okay. And then I will go to them as well, but it is something that you need to look at as an overall. I don't know how many contracts you have as far as diverse contracts in your city, but even when I look around your room right now, I don't see the diversity that I think your city reflects. I am asking that this City Council do a full, full audit of all the jobs that you have before you and how your policies reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Carolyn Cabias. After Caroline is Stan Sala.
I'm Caroline Cabias. I'm with Cafe de California, a statewide Latino state employee advocacy organization. Recently, I reviewed the city's data on representation. Similar to the City of Sacramento workforce audit, your data reflects significant underrepresentation of people of color and in particular in management. Over 50% of Elk Grove's population are people of color, yet it appears that none of the city manager's direct reports is a person of color. It also appears that of the nine Community Services District leaders, only two are people of color, and in the police department, only seven out of 30 managers are people of color. For Elk Grove to serve its public most effectively, it must be able to communicate with the communities served. This includes bilingual capability and sensitivity to cultural norms. With, while responsibility for hiring sits with the city manager, the council is responsible for the direction to the city manager. To address the lack of diversity, the council should take affirmative measures, including at a minimum, one, issue a statement on the positive effects of an inclusive workforce and the council's commitment to that end. Two, direct staff to prepare a comprehensive report on the current demographics of the city workforce, including data on women of color, not just females in the aggregate. Three, direct staff to develop a human resources policies and procedures reflecting best practices that ensure fair and equal opportunities. At a minimum, this should provide for broad advertising of all job openings, much like your broad echo-watering marketing approach and various media. Focused recruitment with communities and organizations which represent underrepresented genders and ethnicities and diverse hiring interview panels. This approach also applies to your contracting program. Thank you for letting me present this issue to you.
Thank you, ma'am, and appreciate you correcting my pronunciation. Next speaker is Stan Sala. After Stan is Kevin Ferreira.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. First of all, I just want to say that it's a privilege to be able to come before the City Council and state a public opinion. About 14 years ago, my wife and I and family were transferred to the City of Elk Grove through a business needs, and we fell in love with this city. And of course, the city isn't a city without the people, so it's the people here that really make the difference. And I'm here to ask you to consider favorably in your negotiations with the Wilton Rancheria and the Outlet Center. I think that I had a nice conversation the other day with Mr. Assemblyman Jim Cooper, and he talked about touring... about touring some of the other casinos throughout the state and saw a lot of pluses there. We know about some of the financial gains that can come into the city through helping charitable organizations and things like that. We know there's been a lot of negative ads coming out through competition to take the dollars away. I'm saying the city of Elk Grove would be way ahead of this if they leverage this casino and all of this and use it, uh, to think about all the things that it can do for our city. I see, uh, you know, shuttle buses taking people from the hotel to Old Town, uh, Elk Grove where there's special events going on. Cause people don't just stay in the casino 24/7. There's going to be lots of opportunities for small businesses to grow. There's going to be lots of other opportunities to, uh, liven up that area down south down there and get the businesses going and make this, uh, Elk Grove a place of, uh, destination. I think families will benefit. I think that, uh, we'll see, uh, money going back into some of the things like, uh, food banks and chicks in crisis and things like this that are needed, uh, to help support the people, uh, that are here in Elk Grove. And so again, I, I would, uh, ask you to please, uh, go in favor of moving this along with the Wilton Rancheria and the Hughes Outlet Center. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Kevin Ferrera. After Kevin is May Lee.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Kevin Ferrera with the Sacramento Building and Construction Trades Council. I'm the executive director. Uh, we support the Wilton Rancheria Casino. Said it every time I've been here. Uh, in a prior meeting, it was said that there's no local interest. They, uh, everybody sees outside interest with the, uh, developers, business entities and things like that. I'm here to tell you that, uh, we represent 3,000 families that live in the city of Elk Grove in the building and construction trades. These people are not working here. The works in the Bay Area. This development, not just this development with the Wilton Rancheria, but with the mall and the other development that the city has been very good at bringing development to the city. These people will now be able to work in their backyards and support their families, spend their money here where they live. So, um, with that, we are going to create also construction opportunities for new people to bring in to the industry. We, we represent 32 apprenticeship programs, which is 32 different career pathways for, uh, new people to come in. We'll be working with the city, with the tribe and outreach so that we can get, start getting people some, uh, jobs here in the, in the local area. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is May Lee. Following May Lee is Norm DeYoung.
Good evening, May Lee, and I'm a Concerned Citizen and, uh, regarding the issue about hiring, uh, processes and practices in the Elk Grove community. And I wanted to, we are all together in a group and somehow we got split, but I wanted to have Allie Anne come and speak too.
Good evening. My name is Allie Anne Murphy Hassan and I am the second vice president for the Greater Sacramento NAACP and I'm also an Elk Grove resident. My comments this evening voices our concern regarding the lack of diversity in Elk Grove government. Diversity in the workplace is important at every level. Forbes study identified workplace diversity and inclusion as a key driver of internal innovation and business growth. Elk Grove minority population is now the majority. With that being said, I am concerned that those who have been at the top for years unconsciously exhibit behaviors that tend to foster what they have always done or do because they are unaware of their biases that prevent them from stepping out of their comfort zone. I'm talking about implicit biases. It's not a bad thing or makes you a bad person. What makes you, what makes it bad is if you don't do anything about that. We are asking that those kinds of, of, of biases be examined, brought out, and so that we can talk about hiring practices in a non-judgmental way and other issues as well. To further our resolve to have our government reflect our community, we're asking for an audit, a citywide audit and training in implicit biases for those departments who hire and promote. Mayor and city council members, be great leaders and be proactive in removing barriers. Thank you for this time and I know you will call for the audit. And once those results are in and analyzed, you will put in place processes that open doors to our majority minority. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, next speaker is Norm DeYoung. After Norm is Amar Shergill.
Your honor, members of the city council, I'm Norm DeYoung. I've resided in Elk Grove since about 91, 92 in there. I've been around here for a while. In 1999, folks around here were geared up for another run for cityhood. For another, with 22 candidates scared up to run, the city had measured vote was a foregone certainty. We did it. We did it because we had a lot of candidates in there and a lot of candidate made sure that a lot of the voters came out. One of the most significant issues of that process was something called the Lent Ranch Mall. The proponents gave lots of money to those who thought would support the mall and they all won. Members of the city council, that was 15 years ago. Nobody on this dais or your surrounding staff was even here then. We've created a successful, in this capacity, because the city wasn't there yet. We've created a successful city within our neighbor, neighborly ambiance and strength of community. Now, out of towners and their money and deceptive tactics are here to influence our future. However, our past looks in on our eyes and says, how much longer? The mall was purportedly a major decision 15 years ago and it still is. This dilemma has been an eyesore of our community for so long. What we need are the thousands of retail jobs and the thousands of auxiliary positions that go with the mall. The Mewa contribution to our community will live far into the distant future by becoming a linchpin for drawing tenants to our mall. We need this mall and the casino will go a long way to securing jobs we need. Aside from needing jobs, what we need now is leadership. Leadership to stand up and eliminate the eyesores that diminish our otherwise strong commitment to growing our community. Once Stand Up California is successful in closing down the casino effort, they will return to their communities and we will still be left wondering how to create a mall we can be proud of. Please resist the urge to be mediocre and lead the way our community realizing many of the goals for which we incorporated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Amar Shergill is our next speaker. Uh, following Amar is Nathan Champion.
Good evening, council. My name is Amar Shergill. I'm a father of three, living here in Elk Grove. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the American Sec Public Affairs Association. As is my practice, I'll start first, uh, by thanking you for the work that you do in countless commissions and boards sitting through presentations like today on wastewater treatment. Um, I know that's not an easy job, um, but there are also times when I need to come before you to raise issues that are problematic. But just before I get there, I want to speak just, for just a moment regarding, uh, police practices, police policies. I reached out to a council member Detrick and council member Hune about two months ago asking about our, um, use of force policies for Elk Grove Police Department. And they were very responsive, immediately said, yeah, that's a discussion we need to have here in Elk Grove. They reached out to, uh, Chief Noblet. Chief Noblet, I, I asked him, you know, why don't we publish or could you give me a copy of those use of force policies? And his response was, not only should you have those policies, I am going to publish all of Elk Grove Police Department's policies. So Chief Noblet, I want to hail you for being transparent, going out of your way. There are a lot of communities in California which would not have done that. So thank you very much. But speaking today about diversity, we live in a diverse city. Many of our speakers have mentioned that. Um, you accepted accolades when you appointed, uh, council member Nguyen to the board. You accepted accolades because you'd, um, taken an action which promoted, promoted diversity. Um, but with those accolades also comes responsibility. Um, this council is better when it looks like the people that it serves. And we saw that earlier today in the, uh, deliberation, council member Nguyen raised an issue regarding language services that maybe if she's not on the council, it doesn't get raised. Um, so our council is better when it looks like the people it serves. City staff is better when it looks like the people it serves. The Elk Grove Police Department is better when it looks like the people it serves. I'd like you all to listen to the speakers that have come here today and work very hard, uh, to make Elk Grove better, better for the people that it serves. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Nathan Champion. And following Nathan is Lynn Wheat.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. Um, I'm coming here as a resident of Elk Grove. Uh, we've got an issue in our neighborhood and, um, we, we need the city council's help. The, the police and the code enforcement are doing excellent jobs. Um, they enforce the laws and the municipal codes as they're written. Um, unfortunately, our municipal codes may need some, some updating, um, to handle, in our case, um, some really poor landlord owners of properties in Elk Grove. Um, we have a house in our neighborhood. Um, you know, it's a zone R5. It's a single family dwelling. At one point, there were 22 people living in this house with eight dogs, um, constant fighting and bickering. Um, it resulted actually in, uh, somebody firing off a handgun, uh, in front of the house and this stray bullet went through my neighbor's house, through a bedroom, through the bathroom and lodged itself in the bathroom door. Um, you know, th- this kind of stuff, um, obviously affects property rates. It's a, it's a hazard to public safety. Um, and, and the police and code enforcement, they're doing, they're, they're doing what they're supposed to do. They go out there and they, they handle these issues. The, the problem is, is that it's reoccurring over and over. So specifically what I'm asking for, um, right now, um, is there's a municipal code that says that in this R5 type property, that you're only allowed to rent two bedrooms. This municipal code does not specify how many people can live or occupy these two bedrooms. So it makes it difficult for the police or code enforcement when they go out there, um, to, to, you know, for a issue, they're called out or whatever and they see, um, by the way, they were able to get the 22 people down to, I think it was four, and now it's back up to 13. Um, but it makes it difficult for them because the people can say, well, you know, I'm just staying here overnight or there's, you know, four of us occupying this room. So if there's eight people living there, uh, you know, they can just say, oh, well, we're four in each room, but they're actually occupying the other rooms in the house. Um, so I think this is just one small step that we can take. It's not going to fix all the issues, but I think what it's gonna do, um, is make it easier to enforce those codes. Obviously, there can be exceptions, right? I mean, we can put exceptions in there for if it's, uh, two people, you know, a husband and a wife plus a young infant, for example. We're not trying to stop that kind of, of thing from happening. Um, but, uh, when, when these, when there's 22 people into a house and there's non-stop calls there, uh, sorry, real quick, I'll, I'll just show this. Um, these are the, uh, this is the stack of paperwork that's generated for the house in my neighborhood. Um, there's actually open investigations as well. So, uh, they, they weren't able to give me the records for that house. This is another Elk Grove house owned by the same landlord, all right, that, uh, this is the stack of paperwork that it generates. Every piece of paper is a police officer or a code enforcement officer going after that house doing something. So it's occupying a lot of Elk Grove resources. And if we can make some small adjustments, maybe we can save some resources for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. City Attorney, can I ask you a quick question? Is, is that something that's within our reach?
So I'm generally familiar with the issue. Code enforcement has been working on this along with the police department. We can take a look at our codes and further look at what types of options we may have for this property and similarly situated properties.
Okay. I would be open to that.
And, and are we able to, do you know if we're able to recover at least a portion of what our overhead is to enforce all of this with?
So, um, local and state laws do allow for certain cost recoveries if we prevail in code enforcement actions. Sometimes it's discretionary for the court. Sometimes there are enforceability and collectability issues, but in the abstract, the answer is yes, that we do have the opportunity to collect cost of enforcement.
And I'd like to find out if these, uh, if this landlord has all his homes registered as well, which is a requirement.
Pardon me, I didn't hear you.
If they'd have, if he has his homes registered, you have to register a rental here in Elk Grove to find out if.
I'll work with staff on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, well, I would be open to considering this if there is a consensus on the council to bring it back at a later time.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm not entirely sure what it is that we're considering. Are we talking about an amendment to the code or?
I think the ask by the speaker was, uh, consideration of the code, right? And I would be open with a explosion along the lines of what you have suggested.
Sure. Maybe, yeah, that, that sounds fine. And we can certainly bring that back. Maybe the suggestion I have right now is maybe code enforcement staff can speak with the, the speaker and get a little more specifics about what he has in mind. Um, there may be some legal hurdles that we need to address and what can and cannot be amended. Um, but we can certainly look at that. And if the council's direction is to bring that back at some point, um, I'll keep you updated on where we're on that and we can bring that back.
Okay.
If that's council's consensus, yeah.
Sounds like a plan. All right. Uh, next speaker is Lynn Wheat. Following Lynn Wheat is Justin Dur.
Good evening, Lynn Wheat, citizen planner. So I decided this month, what I do is bring project of the month forward and talk about some of your land use decisions that you've made previously in the past in developing our community. And this comes from me after returning from a wonderful vacation in Scottsdale, Arizona, where they master planned that community and stuck to the, the plan and was not dependent upon, uh, the wave of the time and what would sell and what would not sell. So earlier I, uh, submitted some photographs and so hopefully you'll have those before you. And the track that I'd like to talk about now is Rancho Verde. That particular housing development was completed two years ago. And if you can see the first picture that I'd like you to look at, shows the homes with the wall and also shows the railroad tracks. Now, I'm not a great photographer, but I hope that you can kind of envision that those railroad tracks are higher up and that the wall there doesn't really, isn't, uh, efficient enough for a sound wall to prevent the noise of the trains. And so you can sign, kind of see the windows, um, above the, the walls there. So it's probably not real quiet. And I actually went through this housing tract and asked the realtor at the time how often trains run. And what she told me was that it's just white noise and don't worry about it. And that, you know, she's there all day and maybe one train came by. So I think that we could do that differently. And I'm thinking of a project right now, um, a capital nursery project that's going to have the residents there also going to be confronted with the sounds of the Walmart trucks. And, and I'll bring some pictures to demonstrate that that wasn't really a great, uh, wall plan as far as blocking some of that sound. Now we'll go to the next picture. And in that picture, you will see a chain link fence. And that chain link fence surrounds the future park for that area. And I'm actually delighted to say that the park's going in sooner than I anticipated. The, um, housing tract was completed in 2015 and the, and fortunately the, uh, park will go sometime in at the end of this year. And they had a, uh, CSD had a meeting with the residents. And, um, when I was discussing with them, they had 45 people show up to help plan the park. And one of the good things about this park and probably one of the best things you've done planning wise, is that the park is within the center of that development. So it has created a real sense of community and people feel very, very vested in their park. And the residents surrounding that park are actually going to be able to work with law enforcement to make sure that there's no troubles within that park and it doesn't become a nuisance or, or that they have juvenile problems there at that park. So that park will be done in 2017. So that park will be done in 2017. So it's just two years, two years since the housing development finished. When I asked the realtor about when the park would go in, she said sometime after the last home was built. So I'm glad that this is occurring before the children are of age, that they're no longer interested in play equipment. But it's an excellent plan, and I hope that you will take a look at that plan because besides children, they've taken adults into consideration. They're going to have a garden there. It has great features. And I'm sure it's because the people within that 306-unit housing tract are totally vested in it. And that's what we want to do as a city, is bring our neighborhoods together. So I'd like you to consider in your future plans, placing parks in the middle of neighborhoods instead of on the edges of it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Justin Dur. Following Justin Dur is trustee Bobby Singh Allen.
Good evening. My name is Justin Dur. I'm an Elk Grove citizen. I've been in Elk Grove for 10 years now, and I am here tonight, excuse me, representing Bits and Speeches Toastmasters Club in Elk Grove. We are a speaking and leadership organization that helps people become better speakers and leaders. Through a structured curriculum, our members learn how to give prepared speeches, evaluate others on their prepared speeches, give impromptu speeches through a segment called Table Topics, where you get to step up to the lectern, you get a topic, and you speak for one to two minutes off the cuff, and through serving key leadership roles in the meetings and in the club as a whole. The organization started in 1924, and our local club here in Elk Grove started 15 years ago. We meet every Thursday at 7:00 p.m., but tomorrow night, we're having a special meeting. We're having an open house. This is an opportunity to come out and find out what we're all about. In the past, we have been honored to have Councilmember Detrick and Councilmember Suen be our guests, our special guest speakers. And tomorrow night, we're excited and honored to have the mayor be our special guest. And our potluck starts at 6:30 tomorrow night. Our meeting starts at 7:00 p.m. We meet at Monterey Trail High School in Elk Grove at 8661 Power Inn Road. Toastmasters has helped me personally grow well beyond what I ever imagined possible in life and in my career. So I would invite anyone who would like to come out and check us out, see what we're all about. If you'd like to learn how to improve your speaking skills, become a better leader, become a better speaker, come check us out. Again, 6:30 p.m. is our potluck. Meeting starts at 7:00, and it's at Monterey Trail High School in Elk Grove on 8661 Power Inn Road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bobby Singh Allen. Following Bobby Singh Allen is Devin Evers.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I appreciate you recognizing me as trustee Singh Allen, although the hat I'm wearing this evening is that of Executive Vice President for the California Lodging Industry Association. We are a membership association that represents hotels and casino resorts throughout California. We have just under 1,100 members statewide. So I'm here this evening to officially on the record enlist my strong support of the Wilton Rancheria project. I know I've reached out to every single one of you in support, but I thought it was important to come here this evening and show my support as well. As you all know, it brings much-needed jobs in all sectors, from the building trades to the hospitality sector. And Elk Grove truly thrives when the residents can live, shop, play, and most importantly, work in their communities. So I look forward to the project, and I want to thank everyone that supported it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Devin Evers. Following Devin is David Kano.
I also am in support of the casino. My name is Devin Evers. I'm the business agent for the Plaster Cement Masons Local. I grew up in Wilton in the '70s, went to school here in Elk Grove. And if you cross the river heading to Wilton, then the tribe was on the left across the river. Deplorable situations where they didn't live very well there. I wonder how many times they flooded? Probably quite a few. Went to Elk Grove High School. Didn't want to go to college, wanted to work in construction. And a lot of the graduates from school are going to need jobs besides going to the Apple headquarters and working there or going to college. They're going to need, you know, regular jobs that this project will create, be it a chef or hotel facilities or what have you, numerous opportunities. You know, the commercial on TV that speaks about, speaks about, you know, crime and vagrancy and stuff that'll happen if you build the casino. Well, what that creates, crime and vagrancy is created by unemployment. So if you've ever heard that idle hands are the sign of the devil, well, we don't need the devil around here, we need jobs. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is David Kano. Following David Kano is Marsha Barclay.
You already know where I stand with the casino. I'm all in favor for it. So I decided to switch gears on something else that I've been wanting to get it off my chest for a second. The potholes that's going on in Elk Grove, I definitely need to see if we're going to patch those things up because it's messing up my alignment of my car. I just want to get that out. Does anybody agree with me on that? Okay. See, the alignment is really bad. You know, I have a brand-new car, and I'd like to see if we can get that patched up. I don't know when you're going to start doing patch-up on these, when it starts not to rain because it's causing a lot of potholes. So kind of see if we can look into that. I really appreciate it because $99 for front and back is $200 I can save with the patchwork on the roads. I really appreciate it. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Marsha? Following Marsha is Fabrizio Sasso.
Good evening, councilmen. I thank you, first of all, for this opportunity to be able to speak before you, and I thank you for listening. I came this evening in support of my neighbor Nate, who so eloquently laid out what is going on in our neighborhood. I don't think I need to reiterate that at all. But I stand before you as a community member, someone who lives with this issue every day. And I think what often gets placed on the back burner are the people who have to live and deal with these situations. We all in that neighborhood have young children. I don't anymore, but I have grandchildren, who used to play on that street, who used to ride bicycles on that street, who used to ride hoverboards on that street. But we can no longer do that because we're afraid for their safety. It is a definite concern of ours about what is going on there. I do thank the police department and the code enforcement for all the support that they have given us. But I have an elderly father who lives two doors from this house also. My father, one of the joys that he has is having the ability to go outside and see people because my mom has passed away and all his friends are gone. He sits on the porch, and he speaks to everyone who goes by. I don't allow him to do that anymore because I'm afraid. Just as a bullet was placed in one of my neighbor's homes, I'm afraid a bullet may be placed in my father's home. So I just thank you for addressing this issue, and I thank you for the diligence I know that you will employ in trying to rectify this situation for us. Again, thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for the assistance you will give us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Fabrizio Sasso. Following Fabrizio is Raymond Hitchcock.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Fabrizio Sasso. I'm the executive director of the Sacramento Central Labor Council. We represent 170,000 union members in the region, including 26,000 right here in Elk Grove. Last time we met, I didn't eat, so tonight I did, so I'm going to be a little bit more calm. I just... I'm here tonight... First, I want to talk about one issue, that the labor community is in full support of the casino project, and that we believe that the jobs that are created should remain local. In order to ensure that, we hope that you advocate for a community workforce training agreement and a project labor agreement with those who are going to build it and those who are going to operate it. And that's very important, that Elk Grove is a community where people can live, work, and play. That being said, I was here before you about a month ago to discuss diversity amongst the council, and tonight I want to talk a little bit more about diversity within our workforce here. As my friend Amar Shergill eloquently put it, and I'll paraphrase, it's important that the reflection of the leadership is a reflection of the community, and that the reflection of our departments are also a reflection of our community. And what we are seeing is that that is not the case with only seven members in leadership, seven diverse leaders in the police department, and one of them being African-American, who recently was promoted, out of 30. That is not a reflection of this community. We like to pride ourselves about our diversity, and we are made better because of our diversity. And so our hope is that you will advise staff and city manager to conduct a study looking at diversity and disparities within gender and race within city departments. And we're hopeful that you all will be able to, you know, make the right decisions in terms of how to direct staff, in terms of staffing in the future, as well as directing staff to conduct a study, as I had mentioned a couple weeks ago, to look into the polarized voting that's happening in this town so that we can have a council that is reflective of the people that live here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Raymond Hitchcock. Following Raymond Hitchcock is Yamina Casilla.
Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Detrick, councilmembers Nguyen and Hume, how are you guys doing tonight? As chairman of Wilton Rancheria, I want to give you guys a little bit of an update. As you all know, on January 19th, we received a record of decision from the Bureau of Indian Affairs to put land into trust, 36 acres on the north end of the Outlet Mall. On February 10th, we got good news. United States government actually put that land into trust for us. So we wanted to give you that update. I know you saw it in the paper, but it's a huge step for us. Obviously, as councilmembers and people of this city, you guys have taken a lot of heat from opposition. It hasn't been pretty, but this tribe is committed to this community. We're committed to working together with you, government to government, your staff, the leadership that you guys have shown. Chief Nobit, we look forward to working with you as well. We want to see this Outlet Mall become something, a vibrant economic driver here in this community. It's going to give our tribe self-sovereignty. It's going to be jobs for this community. It's going to help the construction aspect. And I should go to the Toastmasters so I can learn how to speak in public, so... Anyways, I wanted to let you guys know publicly that the tribe got land into trust. It's an important, momentous step for us. We still have some more steps to take, but this was huge for us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yamina is our next speaker. Following Yamina is Billy Hodges.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Yanina Casillas, and I'm with the Council on American Islamic Relations. We represent the nation's largest Muslim civil rights group in the country, and we represent here in California about 800,000 Muslims. And I'm here to talk today and echo the sentiments and statements from community leaders and community members in regards to diversifying our workforce. Thankfully, here in Elk Grove, we've had a great relationship with the police force in the sense of, like, responding to hate crimes and community engagement. However, we've had, with the uptick of hate crimes within this past year, we've really had to step up our safe public safety trainings, and we've found it very difficult to find policemen or both locally or within the county that could assist us in providing culturally relevant services or just talks to the community. And we've actually had to outsource and reach out to the Bay Area to have Muslim police officers come and talk to the community. So for us, this is very important, and while we are very grateful and thank the response of the local police force, we recognize the importance, especially here in Elk Grove, the increased diversity of the community. And we have a very strong Muslim community here locally, and it would be great to see more diversity, and we would be more than willing to work with you all, and thank you again for your services.
Excellent. Thank you. Billy Hodges. And following Billy is Chris Greeney.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council... Evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Bill Hodges, I've been a resident of Elk Grove for 34 years. I'm president of the Heat and Frost Insulators, and I'm also the apprenticeship training coordinator. And I'm here just to give my support to the casino. I have many of my members working out of the area. I'd love to get some of my Elk Grove members back to work even in Elk Grove. So I think this would be a good project, and it has our full support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chris Greeney. And our last speaker, which is following Chris, is Charles Alta Cruz.
My name is Chris Greeney. I'm a co-chair with the Heat and Frost Insulators and Allied Workers, JATC, and also business representative. I am also strongly in support of the casino. I believe it's going to be a great opportunity to get some young people into the construction trades, as we know, well know. In a lot of our high schools, not everybody is going to be going to college or, you know, the career path to construction and training through the apprenticeship training is a great opportunity and a great chance at a career. And I believe that this will be a good opportunity, as well as the other jobs that are going to be created to help in the economy of the town. So thank you very much for your time.
Excellent. Thank you. Our last speaker is Charles Alta Cruz.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Charles Alta Cruz. I have been a practitioner in tribal public affairs for about 10 years, and I decided to make the two-and-a-half-hour drive up here from the Bay Area to share some of my insights into sort of common misperceptions and misunderstandings that occur around this topic. And I did so particularly after viewing the tape of the last session and seeing some of the issues that were brought up. I think the major misunderstanding, misstatements come around the positive and negative impacts of a casino. And I want... I should state upfront, I am very much in support of this project, coming into this community, and I think it will benefit it substantially. But the first negative impact is usually around crime. There's this feeling, oh, there's going to be an increase in crime. And often, the opponents cite one particular study that came out 20 years ago that indicated a 10% increase in crime after coming of a casino. The problem with this study is it didn't account for general development, general growth as a result of that. So we see that kind of growth if it was a college, if it was a hospital, if it was a shopping center. You have that kind of growth, you'd have that kind of increase in crime. So the fact of the matter is that crime follows people and jobs and money and growth. It doesn't necessarily follow casinos. The other side of that is there's often a misstatement about the type of crime. Sometimes there's an increase in petty crimes like theft, but there's generally a decrease in major crimes because of the increased security and policing forces that are around casinos. So that's on the negative side. The flip side is on the positive side. There's often a huge understatement of the positive impacts of this. As I've stated in previous hearings, there are about 61 tribal gaming communities in California, and I'm not aware of a single community that opposes their project or is up in arms about their project. And in fact, they're generally very, very positive. And in fact, one of the speakers here last time, Cheryl Schmidt of Stand Up For California, she is... goes around to different communities opposing projects, but she is a strong supporter, an advocate of the project in her own backyard that was created just down the road from her house, the Auburn's Thunder Valley Casino. So I just... And in fact, Ms. Schmidt actually sits on the Placer County Tribal Gaming Advisory Board, allocating the financial benefits of that project to the community. So I'm not exactly sure what motivates Ms. Schmidt to come into other communities and oppose them, and yet be very strong advocate for the project in her community. So in summary, I think, you know, what's good enough for Lincoln, California, and Ms. Schmidt, and 61 other communities should be good enough for Elk Grove, and I strongly support the project coming to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If I stand corrected, our last speaker is Mike If I stand corrected, our last speaker is Michael Manaski, Mr. Manaski.
Well, you know, I've lived here since 1993 in Elk Grove, and I actually oppose cityhood. I think this is a monstrous, unmanageable city. I mean, cities, there are cities back east where I used to live, in the Great Lakes area, that had, you know, one square mile. This is 42 square miles. You guys want to continue spreading, spreading out, you know, into areas that flood, that should be open space, should be, that are prime ag land. I have a lot of comments about the police report when it comes out, 10.1, and also the homeless plan that you're talking about. But I oppose the idea that shopping and gambling should be our economic engine, should be the prime motivator of a city. I find it completely, patently absurd. So, when you say, you know, oh, you know, there's nothing we can do about this thing, and it's a foregone conclusion, and, you know, there's people, you know, who are interested in building this, that's fine and dandy, but it doesn't make it so. It doesn't make, you know, putting strip malls up and putting, you know, more nail salons and more, you know, our communities are built and improved by having good schools, by having parks, by having libraries, and resources for the community to use. So, I, you know, I, this is a, you get a litany of speakers up here, you know, whether it's the, you know, Central Labor Council and the business, region business, and, you know, all the people that have essentially funded all of you, sponsored all you to run for office. I find it just an abomination, a moral abomination, to say that I should shop more, or I should gamble, or I should tell my kids to do that, or anybody else, that somehow this is the prime motivation. It's idiocy. Now, if you want to, still want to have a casino, fine. You know, if you're going to be the first in line at the buffet line, Mr. Mayor, fine. I'm not going to stop you, but I don't think it's going to build community. We build community through personal relationships with our neighbors, and this is not a way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your input. Seeing that there are no additional speakers, let's move to the next item, please.
Take us to Section 6, our general administration information.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, first, I'd like to tell you about a couple of job fairs that city staff will be attending this week. First, representatives from Economic Development and Human Resources are partnering with the Elk Grove Unified School District and the Kasumna CSD to host a job fair in Redwood City this Saturday. The school district is forecasting need for 350 positions in the upcoming school year, and is recruiting for multiple positions. Staff will be sharing information regarding the city's quality of life to encourage educational professionals to relocate to our city. The other job fair that we'll be attending is the Greater Sacramento Urban League's 2017 Diversity Job Fair, which will be held tomorrow at Sacramento City College. Also, we'd like to invite our city's youth to attend a special event on Saturday, March 11th, from 10:00 to 2:00 in the city council chambers, featuring speakers and presentations that will motivate and inspire teens interested in making an impact on their own life, within the community, and with others. We have further information on the event called Making An Impact on our website. Also, we'd like for everyone to save the date for the 2017 State of the City address. Government and business leaders will be at the chamber's annual State of the City event on Thursday, March 30th, at 6:00 PM at the Falls Event Center, where Mayor Lee will deliver his inaugural State of the City address, reflecting on the city's diversity and Elk Grove's continuing commitment to the American dream. The mayor's speech will be broadcast live from the city's website for those unable to attend. Contact the Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce to purchase tickets for this event. In the continuation of the city's Join the Movement program, the city has thrown down the gauntlet with its second annual cross-training fitness challenge, which we call the Elk Grove Gauntlet. It's scheduled on April 15th in front of City Hall. Teams of two will compete in novice and advanced divisions. Anyone age 18 or older can participate in this Join the Movement event. We invite you to visit the city's website for details and registration. Also, to remind folks that the Amgen Tour of California will be making its debut in Elk Grove in a couple of months. The city will host a Stage 3 start of the Amgen Breakaway From Heart Disease Women's Race on May 13th. Hundreds of volunteers age 18 or older are needed to serve as course marshals and other supporting roles for the lifestyle festival taking place at Elk Grove Regional Park. Again, we encourage folks to visit our website for more event information or to sign up to volunteer. Moving to the standing citywide initiatives update with regard to the aquatics complex in the Commons, the project was put out to bid on Friday, February 17th, and the bid opening date is scheduled for March 21st. Moving to the Camera Road widening and extension project, we note that the administrative draft of the environmental document is being revised per the review comments, and we will be providing an update on this project under Agenda Item 10.5 this evening. With regards to the Railroad Avenue property in Old Town, the site and restroom work are out to bid, and we will be receiving bids on February 27th for the site work and February 28th for the restroom work, and both elements will be completed this spring. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? Seeing that there are no questions, Councilwoman Nguyen, you want to start off?
I had the opportunity to attend the Elk Grove Night with the Kings with councilmember Soon and councilmember Detrick. We were able to get a court experience where we were able to toss a couple of Kings softballs out into the crowds, so that was a really good experience for us. I attended the Rise For All Soft Dance opening that just opened up right off of I-5 and Laguna Boulevard, I believe, and they're a new organization that's going to provide tap ballet, hip-hop for families in Elk Grove at a very affordable cost. I also had the privilege to present a resolution to the Chinese New Year Culture Association at their 20th year anniversary. They've been putting together shows for the last 20 years. It was held at Sac State, and just recently, they started doing them at Hyam Johnson High School, and hopefully, we can get them to come here and start doing their shows out here in the city of Elk Grove.
Member Hume.
Thank you, mayor. I emceed the Committee for the Arts, For the Love of Music Program at the Falls. It was a classical music concert put on by the Committee for the Arts. It was very well attended. It was amazing caliber of talent, and I think, hopefully, a precursor of what's to come with increased cultural offerings in the city. And then I have the Capital Connector meeting this Friday morning in Rancho Cudovin, so I won't be able to attend the Central Valley Rail Working Group meeting, but our transit manager, Jean Faletta, will be attending that instead. That's all I have. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Thank you. I'll piggyback on Councilman Hume's, Committee for the Arts was a great event. He was the emcee and was not feeling very well. He toughed it out, being sick, but the obligation to come and serve such a great event, it was awesome for him to be there and tough it out and did a great job, as usual, does a phenomenal job. A lot of people don't know that he's had professional background in doing auctioneering and has the opportunity to go to school for theatrics, and is able to use that not only here on the council, but out in the community as well. You already heard about the Elk Grove Night at the Kings, a great event, a lot of great people out there, and I used to draw everybody together and use an RT to go up there. That was actually my first time ever riding RT, and so, it was an interesting experience, for sure. The last one I want to bring up before I have a future item I'd like to discuss, anybody notice we had any rain and flooding the last few days? So, I personally, with my other career with PGA, I've been out of town a lot, and I know that Councilman Soon's, one of the, I'm not sure if the title's right, Deputy Director, was the acting director, actually, the other day for some of the floods. But what I need to do is take time to, we need to really recognize all the public safety, public works, and utility workers, and anybody in the industry that, you know, keeps the lights on, keeps the streets flowing, keeps the creeks flowing. These people are out there, I mean, I used to, I was a lineman and crew foreman for years, and they're out there putting their life on the line, not only the work that they do, but just driving to and from to get to the locations. And so, Chief, you know, I know you got some guys in the back there, you know, you guys do an outstanding job protecting us all year long, anyway, but it intensifies with the storms and the relationships with the fire department. So, you know, I really applaud everything you guys do. Bob, your public works team, you know, for what we went through this past few weeks, Elk Grove really came by with flying colors for what we went through compared to a lot of other cities around the state of California. And then the last item, as, you know, I've had discussions over the years with different council members on the key to the city. We established the key to the city several years ago, and I don't think we've taken full advantage of the opportunity to recognize some of the outstanding residents of Elk Grove that have done national and international accomplishments. So, I, and one, since we were a young city, we've only had this for a short period of time, and I think we've given three key to the cities in history, that we look at the opportunity, kind of looking back and coming up to where we are currently with maybe a mega event that we could get some more international and national recognition across many areas, whether it's performance, or athletics, or in the education field, people that have just excelled. And I'd like to see if you guys would have an interest in bringing that back, and that staff could maybe bring back some ideas on it.
And, you know, I had a conversation with you, Vice Mayor, about Key of City. The accomplishment which warrants Key of City is so significant, and my feeling is that we just don't spend enough time to honor them here at council, and I would be in agreement with that.
Thank you. Rest of the council?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, great. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Soon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the comments from Vice Mayor Detrick. I want to echo those sentiments as well. As I mentioned, and the reason for my tarnation is because I am the Deputy Director for the Flood Operations Center for the Department of Water Resources, and as many of you have seen in the news lately, we've been doing a lot of the flood fighting, including today. And I think, you know, it's worth mentioning, I mean, we talked about the Kings event, Night of the Kings, and it was a fantastic event, but it was literally as we were promoting light rail and riding on the train over that, you know, I received the phone call to, that we all needed to report back in at 11:00 PM that evening because Orville Dam, they thought was going to fail. And so, you know, we, in fact, I want to thank Councilwoman Nguyen for giving me a ride home because we came on light rail. So, we left early, and so, I was able to get in there, and, you know, we're going on day 16 now, today. And, you know, and I say this for, you know, not really for me, but for the men and women that are doing flood response, you know, we're currently on 24 operations, 12 hours a day. So, you know, we've been up since 4:30 this morning, and there's, you know, you look at OES and officers, and I want to thank Chief Noblet for sending some officers up to support the Orville evacuation. And I want to thank the school district for housing Uba City schoolchildren coming back home from a sporting event when they couldn't get back there. And there's a lot of work, I know it wasn't raining today, but all day, you know, down San Joaquin County, you know, we've got teams out there, public safety folks, sheriffs, officers, incident command teams. We, our commander was spent, they're out there 24 hours a day down Madera County, Stanislaw County from Modesto, and San Joaquin County. We had to deploy people from Red Bluff to come down and relieve them. There's a lot of folks that are putting a lot of energy out there, and, you know, I get a moment to, you know, we're coordinating the operations, and I get a moment to come out and go, you know, go grab lunch and come back, and everybody's, you know, going about their daily lives, and, you know, it's very interesting because we're living in a bubble in the sense that people are, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stress going on at some of these, some of these command centers, because, you know, there's obviously property and lives and things like that at risk. And so, I want to just draw folks' attention to that because I've gained an appreciation for it. This is the first time we've had to request and receive direct assistance from the Army Corps of Engineers in 20 years, since 1997. So, it's a bit of a landmark occasion, you know, for us in this line of business. So, anyway, thank you for all your support out there and understanding. And back to city business, I was able to break away for an hour for a coordination of advocacy trip as, for a few of us that are going back to Washington DC in March to advocate for flood protection, for some of the projects that were authorized, what we call a general reevaluation reports. They were authorized through the Army Corps of Engineers, it's their civil works process, and trying to get funding for flood protection projects for the Sacramento region, as well as transportation projects that include our Camera Road and Southeast Connector Project. So, looking forward to that opportunity next month. And then, I'd like to see a, I'd like to, if the council would agree, I'd like to entertain a resolution. When I think about resources that we, the council, when we award to nonprofits here in this city, I want to ensure that those funds go towards nonprofits that are either, you know, located here or benefit the residents of this city. And so, I'd like to, because I know we have these community development block grants that we consider each year, and I'd like to incentivize, or at least incentivize, but maybe just ensure that the criteria of that, those nonprofits that receive funds from our city are ones that benefit the residents of this city. And if they could, the council would be willing, I'd like to bring that back to talk about.
I thought that was built into already. Is that the case? Yeah, it is, right?
Okay. So, and they need to, is it, okay, so could you?
When nonprofits provide the information on their applications, they talk about either, like for special events, how many Elk Grove residents are participating, as well as how many from outside of the area are participating, or for the community services grants, how many Elk Grove residents are being served. And, you know, and we have that information, and that is used in the evaluation of each of the applicants that we review for funding. And then we bring that back to the council before the, we handle that prior to the budget process because we are syncing up with federal funding deadlines, which I think is in March. So, you'll be seeing all of that next month.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you.
Laura, if I could piggyback a little bit more on that, what about if there's an outside entity that wants to come in and do an event here that benefits, the event benefits the residents, but the money that we're putting in, whether donation or in-kind services, is to an outside, whether it's a nonprofit or a professional firm, that's not from this area, so that really, the money that's going to be generated from that actually leaves Elk Grove?
For purposes of special events, that may be the case, but the primary goal of the special events grants is to bring people into Elk Grove. the special events grants is to bring people into Elk Grove and to highlight the city to both, to citizens and non-residents alike.
I think if there's opposing folks that want to do events, and first we have to look at Elk Grove and the region, not be going out to, so people aren't using Elk Grove as a cash cow for whatever their particular organization or company is.
I understand, and when we bring back the special events funding, we'll definitely have that conversation.
Okay.
I will, I'm sorry, if I can chime in, I will say though, as somebody that runs a community-based organization, is typically if you're going to do an event in a city, you will do it in a city where you're serving residents or constituents, right, that are here already. I wouldn't come in to the city doing an event here and not have anybody that I'm serving here, right, because then there's no use to advertise my organization or the service that I'm providing. So typically, most folks that will do an event in the city, they are providing some type of service.
I agree, but there has been some, some that have come here that have not had a vested interest in Elk Grove and made money off of the events here in Elk Grove where we've actually done either in-kind and/or monetary contributions, and I think we need to be real careful about analyzing that.
Yes, sir, and, well, again, we'll have that conversation, the special events will come in May, and we will definitely have that conversation about those groups and who are Elk Grove organizations and what benefits they bring to Elk Grove. So we'll definitely have that conversation with that, with the events.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right. Elk Grove at the Kings was terrific. I know that the Vice Mayor is making fun of my height, but I'm reminded when I go on to the basketball court and realize that I really am short. But nonetheless, we almost had the entire council there, with Councilmember Hume being a little bit under the weather.
I made it to the light rail station, but that's as far as I could go. They asked if that was Spud Lee on the floor.
Right, yeah, absolutely, right. Moving on, took part in the sanitation board meeting this morning, what I'd like to share of important is the partnership with the sanitation board and also Elk Grove Unified School District in identifying a coordinator for career technical education in addition to providing teaching opportunities for young people in elementary schools within the districts, within the District of Elk Grove and within our city. Was certainly excited about that. We had the representative from Elk Grove Unified, the director of the career technical education, and I get excited when government agencies get together and collaborate. One other item that I'd like to mention is the Pleasant Grove High makeshift shelter, I suppose, that came into play, and Councilmember Soon had mentioned a little bit about this. When I went to the shelter, and this certainly was a response to, as Councilman Soon had mentioned, students who are on their way to a field trip and on their way back, and they had just heard about the evacuation out of Uba, Orville area, and our community came together. And this is something that is noteworthy, that it wasn't just the school district, but it was the CSD Fire, it was Elk Grove PD, it was the VIP Program, it was the CSD CERT Program, and Elk Grove Unified. And when I walked in there, I saw hundreds of cot laid out, hundreds of pizza, ready for these kids to come and relax while who knows what may happen to their home. This is the kind of, these are the kind of activities in which brings our community together, and when I witnessed that, I was touched, and I just wanted to share that with everyone. The other thing is, I heard a number of the speakers, and Laura, I want to kick it to you. I know that there was a number of suggestions about diversity report, diversity audit, what would that look like, and how strenuous would that be for your office?
We could certainly pull one together. This is, the issue of diversity has been one that we have been tackling for some time. The police department in particular, and Chief Noblet will be giving you a presentation about that later on tonight under item ten-one. On the administrative side of the street, I can, of Laguna Palms, we recognize that we are not as diverse as we would like to be, I, you know, will tell you that right up front. We are working to make connections to, into different communities to strengthen that partnership and to widen the pool that we have, but I'm more than happy to pull together an audit and to give you an idea of where we are. Also bear in mind that we only have three hundred and twenty employees. We lose one or two, and that really skews your numbers. But, you know, diversity is something that we want to strive for, and I'm more than happy to tell you where we are with the state of diversity, both within the police department specifically and in the city as a whole, and bring that back to you and talk about what measures we're taking to try to improve our numbers.
All right. And I want to also acknowledge that about a year ago, you and I had this conversation already, and you were very proactive in talking about efforts in which we can reach out to the different communities to gain that diversity. So, you know, thank you very much, and thank you for your willingness. Do you need a consensus from us, or is that sufficient?
No, sir, we can, we can bring that back.
Okay. I think it would also be beneficial for those speakers who actually came and raised an issue, if they can get copies as well.
Sure.
Thank you, all right. Anything else?
Can I, can I add one other thing on a completely different subject, but I forgot to tell you this in my journal administrative notes. I wanted to thank you for coming to our city manager's luncheon to thank staff for the work that they do during the year, and I know that Councilmember Soon tried to get there, and those floods got in the way. But in any event, it was, we really appreciated you being there and to help us celebrate Tiffany Ford, our dispatch manager, receiving the, our Service Excellence Award for the work that she did during a very trying time in the police department. So I wanted to first, you know, congratulate Tiffany here, but I also wanted to thank you for your interest in Councilman Soon. I know you were there in spirit, so, thank you.
Well, I mean, your continuing efforts to acknowledge our employees is tremendous, and my taking part in that is really just to acknowledge the fact that we are able to do this part-time because we have very, very good people, and I'm not shy about that. I think our administrative team is dynamite, you're very proactive, and you listen to what needs to be done. That being the case, I'm very fortunate to volunteer my time for this in knowing that the city is in good hands, so thank you very much. Next item.
Takes us to section eight, our consent calendar items.
All right, want to open to public comment, and I see a few speakers, right? I have Mark Freeman. Mark Freeman, no longer around. Julian Canete, Canete. Julian, no longer around? Is there anymore? I see, he's coming. Come on down, sir.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, good evening. Here on eight point eight, a few short comments. As you know, we've been, Julian Canetti from the Policy Director Sacramento Asian Chamber of Commerce. As you know, we've been very supportive of the development project, again, to express that support, and the actions you've been taking to make sure that moves forward, of course supportive of the Wilton Ranch area and the tribe, and congratulations to them on finally, you know, no longer being landless. But again, we look forward to the jobs that this development project will create, the economic opportunities that it will create as well, and the investment in this community, and the community of Sacramento in general. Especially from hiring local businesses, where we advocate for that as, and work with our local unions here, in turn advocating for local hires as well, so that our local communities get the benefit and keeping those dollars in this economy here. So again, our support of the project, and again, I do, we do want to commend the council on their, on their efforts to make sure that everybody is heard on this issue. Again, we feel that's important, that everybody has an opportunity, whether it's against or for, we again commend you for that, and taking, making sure that everybody has the opportunity to speak on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing that there are no additional speakers, want to, want to close public comment, and want to open up for deliberation, direction?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the consent calendar, noting for the record an abstention on item eight point eight for myself.
Got a motion? You got a second?
Wait, before you do that, we have an item.
We have an item on, from staff, which is the scheduling for the special meeting on March first. In the staff report, it stated a start time of three o'clock, and I think we received a request that that time be bumped up to two o'clock, so it's staff checking in to see if that's amenable for folks. Oh, to one o'clock, just moving on up. So that would be a change, and of course, for whatever time is finalized tonight, that's what we would notice for the special agenda that gets posted for that meeting.
That does not work real well for me.
Maybe you could do that just sort of procedurally, so we know where on the agenda. Maybe you pull eight point nine, you can have a discussion about the timing, move the rest of the agenda, and then?
I'll amend my motion to pull item eight point nine and move the rest with my abstention on eight point eight.
Yeah, I need, again, for my schedule right now, too, I'll second that, to talk about schedule.
Got a motion, second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposition, and we have the abstention on record, right?
Eight point three, I wasn't here for that meeting, and eight point six.
Standing on those items?
Yes.
Councilman Nguyen? Abstention on the item?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, for the record, let the red curve reflect. All right, next item.
No, we need it, we pull eight point nine.
That would be at eight point nine, which is, just to discuss that scheduled start time, and the staff reported it said a three o'clock start time, but it sounds like we're bouncing around a few other options for that day.
Okay.
Well, I mean, my schedule is uncertain at this point, but there's a lot of water in the rivers, that's what I could say. If, the hope is that, the hope is that things will hold, and we can start ramping down and manage it through normal operations, but I can't, I just can't commit to that right now.
Does one particular start time work better than another for you?
My shift is from five thirty AM to six PM, and it can change at any given time. I could end up, it just could change.
Yeah, for me, it's real tough. I mean, I have a team of fourteen people that I run, and to get out of there, you know, I got to get out of there at two thirty to get here by three, and that's pushing it as it is.
So I guess for?
And I can, I can do a three, I'd have to leave at six, though, for a bit, maybe about thirty minutes, and I can come back.
Laura, is it critical that we do it at the beginning of March, if we were to, if we were to do it a couple, a couple weeks later, and then we could adjust the time for Vice Mayor?
I would just, the only, I would have to check with the facilitator to make sure that she was available.
I'm fine, anytime of that day.
So can we pull, can we pull and just, and re-coordinate on days, then? If the time won't work for two, my day is uncertain regardless, so whatever we schedule, if it's later in the, obviously in the month, then I have a better chance, but.
Right.
Would that be all right?
I'm willing to reschedule, yeah, I mean, it's, it's subject to whatever the facilitator schedules.
Yeah, I'd have to, yeah, I just have to check with the facilitator, but, you know, I can get some dates from her and then coordinate with you, and then we can, we can try again to set a date, if that's okay.
So do we need a formal vote to not schedule this meeting?
No.
Maybe pick a date where the rain would stop?
Yeah, thanks.
I'll consult dry day.
If only it was just rain.
Yeah, can you put, can you put a memo out to stop the rain dance?
And the river flow?
All right, well, we'll come back with, we'll come back with some dates, and we'll bring it back.
Excellent. Next item.
We have no public hearings under section nine, which takes us to section ten, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item ten point one, which is to receive the two thousand and sixteen annual report from the Elk Grove Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. It's my pleasure here tonight to have a few minutes to present our two thousand and sixteen annual report to you. I will say that it's been a long time since we've done one of these. In fact, in my going on eight years of being here, we've not done an annual report. My guess is it's probably been about ten years since we have. And the intent behind the report itself is to be informative, to transparently provide some information for the, our community members, provide some information regarding programming that we run at the department, certainly not intended to be a panacea of all things PD. We obviously, in a short report, can't include all the information relative to the topics that are going to be broached in here pretty superficially in some cases, and briefly, maybe is a better description. So before I go into the report, I just, I want to point somebody out, if you'll indulge me, in the back is Tamara Lopez. Tamara, raise your hand, thank you. So Tamara is our administrative analyst that actually put this together, pulled together all this information, and it was quite an undertaking to do, and I really appreciate Tamara's work, and I think you will too, as we go through. I'm really proud of the work that she's done, and proud of Tamara in particular, she did a great job with this. I provided all of you with a colored copy of this up there, just for your reading pleasure, whenever you want to take a look at it. I will state, too, for you and for the members of the community that are either here or listening in, that the plan is to post this to our website tomorrow, so it'll be publicly available on our website. You know, Mr. Shergill earlier was kind enough to make some remarks relative to our posting of our policies, and I think, too, that in that light of being informative and transparent, that there's some information in this report that should, should be helpful in that regard as well. So I know you have a number of items ahead of you tonight, my plan is just to get through this thing fairly quickly. I will pause on a couple of slides where I'd like to highlight some things, but I invite you to ask any questions along the way that you like, and I'm happy to pause to take those. So there's me talking with my hands out, as I am prone to do, although tonight I've got a keyboard to run, so I should be able to keep that to a minimum. That's just a welcome page, you may recognize a couple of the folks in that photo. I don't know if you know these folks or not. These are the wanted, these are the Elk Grove Most Wanted, the top five. And then just some general information about the city, we wanted to provide, you know, just some basic information, some demographic information. You know, while we're on this page and at least have the demographics on the screen, I do want to say for the record that, you know, all the conversation that we had earlier this evening relative to diversity in my department specifically, I agree with. I think that, to the extent possible, you know, the police department in particular needs to look as much like the community as possible in the interest of, you know, effectively, not just effectively policing, but in, you know, securing the public trust and being able to work with the public. I think it's ideal that we look as much like that public as possible. So I will show you another slide later in the presentation that actually provides the demographic information for our department, because again, I wanted people to have it. I don't, we're not going to operate behind a veil of secrecy, I think that information is topical, and people should know what it is.
Chief had a question relative to that, so to try to mirror the look and feel of our, the residents of our community, are we getting applicants that are going into the academy that have that same reflection?
Well, not, not to the extent that we would like, and that's where, and certainly not to the extent that we can, that we can actually gain, you know, gain parity with what you see on this screen relative to the city's overall demographic. you know, gain parity with what you see on this screen, relative to the city's overall demographics. However, that's where our recruiting efforts and things of that nature come in handy, to try to, again, make connections through, through frankly, any means possible. There, there was a speaker earlier representing the Muslim community, you know? And I'll just say that I, about a week and a half ago, I went to a local mosque, and I spoke to the members there at their request. And that was a different discussion, it had to do with their safety and, and some issues that they were experiencing. But while I was there, I made the pitch that I make everywhere I go, which is, if, if, if you're, if you're at all inclined, I encourage you to come and spend time with us, join us. You know, we really are trying to, to involve, you know, as many diverse members of the community as possible. So that's a good question. I, I just, you know, we don't, they don't just walk in the door in that level of diversity that ideally would, would match these numbers. I think we have to work a little harder to get there.
See, even with that, if somebody goes through the academy, when they come out, are they obligated to come to Elk Grove? Or that they could go anywhere in the state, right?
Right, that's right.
So it, it just seems like the pool's, it's, it, the pool is very diluted.
It's, yeah, I, I would say it's somewhat diluted. It's also getting shallower, it seems, by the, by the day, frankly. And there are a lot of reasons for that, and I'll, I'll try to stay on topic. But, you know, some of my opinions relative to that point are that, you know, there's a, there, in the 2017 society, there's, there's a certain amount of distrust that exists between communities and their law enforcement organizations, in some communities. I wouldn't represent that that's the case here, I'm actually very thankful that it's not. But I would submit that in, again, in this current state of society, that there are, are groups, and typically, it's ethnically diverse groups of people that frankly don't want their children to become police officers. They don't want them to join law enforcement, for various reasons. Some of which have to do with trust, some of which have to do with, with experiences from, from their, their native countries. And I, you know, I think perhaps the mayor knows that to be the case. And that's just a statement of fact, and just frankly requires that we work a little bit harder to find ways to connect with folks. And I, I've said this to some of you, I think individually, but I'll say it again. I think that's an evolutionary process, quite frankly, to get to the point where, where people are actually willing to entrust their, their children, you know, their husbands, their wives, their daughters, their sons, to become, to join us, to become police officers. I think that process takes time, and that, that's a, that process of establishing trust and nurturing trust is, is evolutionary in nature. It's, it's not as simple as flipping a switch. So anyway, I don't mean to get off on a, on a tangent.
No, no, I asked the question, I mean, just really to piggyback on what you're saying.
Right, right.
That the, you also, the military has some of those same problems in cycles.
Absolutely.
I mean, if you look in the Vietnam era, man, people were treated horribly in the military. So, you know, why, they had a very difficult time getting people to go in.
Yeah, but, but, but the, the one thing I would say is I, I, you know, that's, I don't offer that as an excuse for not working hard to, to be as diverse as possible.
But it is a reality.
It is a reality, yes.
Will you go over some recruitment efforts that, that are gonna happen this next coming year, or what you're doing now?
Certainly. Would it be acceptable to do it when that slide comes up?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So again, I won't spend time on every, every slide, this is just some information. The one thing here I would point out is our, our staffing, our allocated staffing levels. We're currently at 140 sworn officers, 86 professional staff members. And the divisions are listed right below those numbers. And we'll go into more detail on those as we progress. This, I, I love this picture. This is a, we, we had a, an award ceremony that some of you actually attended, and, you know, we, we took the opportunity, since we had one of our CSI folks present, to take some pictures. And so this was our, this was after, and I'm gonna talk a little bit later in the presentation about our turnover, through retirements and, and things of that nature. But this was, you know, this was the, this is the management team at the police department, minus a couple of members who were unable to make it that day. Where's Tiffany? So as you're looking at this, right off of my left shoulder is Tiffany Ford, and she's the dispatch manager that City Manager mentioned earlier, won the Service Excellence Award this year, and we're very proud of Tiffany. So that's just a general organization chart that would provide some explanation of how we're divided up and who's responsible for what. This is just a quick slide to illustrate for folks where our, our beat boundaries are drawn, just so that in a quick glance, you know, they can look at that and know which beat they fall in. Okay, I wanna spend a little bit of time on this slide, this is one of the ones I mentioned. This, this is a, a quick snapshot of, of crime in Elk Grove. And the, these, these numbers here are actually our Uniform Crime Report numbers, our UCR numbers, for 2016 and 2015. And I, I just would, without going into great detail on, on all the categories, I would point out that all categories, with the exception of one, well, homicide was, we had one each year in 2016 and 2015. The other categories all went down in 2016 over 2015, with the exception of the rape category. You'll notice that number is higher. I've had some level of discussion lately with folks about that, and about why that is. I think you have a green sheet in your package tonight, that, and maybe perhaps someone will come up and, and, and offer his or her opinion on that. But what I would, what I would submit is that the, and this is what we've learned, too, from our counterparts, not just in the region, but throughout the state, and even on a national level, is the, the Uniform Crime Report definition, the actual federal definition of the crime of rape, has been expanded over recent years to bring in other offenses that previously had not actually been classified in that manner. So to some extent, I, I think the higher number reflects that, that, that those additional offenses that are coming in. I think the other thing that's represented there is, is more awareness and a, a keener level of awareness as, as it relates to reporting. You've probably all seen, you know, news stories, advertising campaigns, public outreach at the middle school, high school, certainly at the college level, you know, encouraging victims to come forward and to report. And I, I, I believe that that's, you know, some of that increase is, is represented in the fact that there actually is more timely and better reporting now than there had been in the past. Which, the number's higher, to be sure. But I, you know, the way that I would look at that is, is that that's actually progress. I think that represents progress in terms of reporting. You know, there are victims that are coming forward and, and coming out of the shadows, so to speak, to report these, these incidents. And, you know, in some cases, that, that brings about a higher number. In, in the case of this particular crime, I believe that to be true.
Chief, do these numbers reflect kind of the anticipation you had with respect to realignment and Prop, what was it, 47? And some of the things that sort of looked, forecasted bad news that doesn't seem to have been realized, or...
Yeah, actually, it's a little counterintuitive as it relates to Prop 47. And in fact, you know, our numbers are, are, are better. We're not a total anomaly in this regard, but our numbers are better than, than a lot of other cities in the state, where Prop 47 did have the exact opposite effect, where the numbers actually went up. And with respect to Prop 47, it's the, you know, the property crime categories that typically take the greatest hit. And as you'll see on the slide there, you know, our burglary numbers were down in 16 over 15 significantly. Larceny the same, and, and auto theft. Auto theft is a real, is, is very easily affected by Prop 47. I guess that's the best way to say it. But we do some things here that are a little bit different than other places. And, and that brings me to the, to the right side of the slide there, where what we tried to do was capture also, you know, some little factoids with respect to what we're doing in relation to some of these items. And we do run auto theft task force operations through some grant funding and, and some other funding, that's very helpful in that regard. We actually put teams out there, and that's all they're, they're looking for, to recover or stop auto theft in, in progress. And I think in our case, that's really paid some dividends.
Is there a way to get this broken down even further, in a sense of the beats, I guess, is what you have here? So for motor theft, rape, robbery, all of that, is there a way to find out how many of those occurred in which beat?
Oh, there's absolutely a way to find out. I mean, we have the technology, so to speak, to do that. Again, keeping in mind that, that, you know, this was really intended just to be a screenshot, we, we stuck to that. But we certainly have the ability to do that. In fact, we do it typically at, at our beat meetings and other more localized meetings in neighborhoods. We, we like to provide them with the, we can even break it down by smaller reporting districts within beats. So we do have the ability to do that, yes.
I would like a copy of that, if I can.
Sure.
Chief, I, if I had, on your, the rape item, first of all, one rape is one too many. That, so I just wanna be real clear on that. But with the reporting that we do have, how much of that is stranger rape versus, lack of better words, date rape?
Well, the stranger, I don't, I don't believe any of those were stranger rapes. In fact, I checked into this a little bit in preparation for this presentation, as you might imagine. And we had a, I think we had three cases of, of what you would classify as a stranger kind of a case. And those, those were all investigated and determined to be unfounded. So the numbers that are there are, in fact, you know, known perpetrator kind of cases. I would also point out that those numbers include cases in which a single perpetrator may have, you know, violated, you know, numerous people, even in, in a, in a family structure. And in fact, in those numbers are four, that, we had four cases where there were multiple victims along the lines I just described, and that represented 11 actual victims. And those 11 victims are all represented individually in that, in that number, if that makes sense. Not sure if I captured that correctly, but, or said it right, but that's... The only other thing that's, that's actually not on the slide, and, and I would, I would remind folks, these numbers are really, the, the, the government, you know, the wheels turn slowly sometimes, right, in the, in the government, especially in the federal government. And so it takes a while for these numbers to be finalized, but this, so these are preliminary. But, but I don't expect that they're gonna fluctuate a lot when the final numbers come out, which will be later this year. I, you know, I would say that just as a general category, our violent crime, 2016 over 2015 was at, was down 6.45% overall. Property crime was down 24% in 2016 over 2015.
Chief, can you go one slide back?
I can, I believe so.
To the, I'm just curious, are the beats divided by council district?
They're not.
They're not, okay.
They're not. They're not.
Thanks.
Which is why Councilmember Wen, we probably need to talk about what, which we can do offline, talk about what it is that you're interested in specifically. I can get that to you.
I, I think it would be good for all of us to know, so that we can kinda find out where the majority of these crimes are happening, and that we can work together as a team to kinda come in and figure out if there's any, if we need to do more community meetings, if we need to educate our community in that area, if we need to bring you in. I think, you know, there's a way to dig deeper into that.
It's a good thought, thank you. So I'm gonna quickly get into our Field Services Division, that's our Patrol Division, traffic. On the left side of the screen, you'll see the, the Command and Management Staff associated with that division, and then down at the bottom, the actual units that are part of that division. I'll point out that I, I'm really happy to be able to include here for the first time that we, we do, as I mentioned at a previous meeting, we do have a School Resource Officer now that's assigned to the district. We've taken some liberty with referring to that as School Resource Unit, it's a unit of one right now, but he, he is part of a larger unit, so hopefully that, that counts for something. But we're already starting to see some dividends, honestly, with increased communication between our organization and the, the school district and the district police, that I, I'd like to see that even improve going forward.
You know, a quick question on that. Previously, when I did a ride-along with one of the officers, there was an incident that occurred on campus, and it went into the community. And it turns out that this incident involved the parents, so it kinda involved multiple jurisdiction. One of the frustration with the officers is the information that was being populated by the sheriff's arm of the SROs was not being populated in our computers. Has, with this interaction of this School Resource Officer from our team, have that been mitigated in, in any way?
Well, I think it's been mitigated in this way. I, I don't know that from a systems, you know, from an IT system standpoint, it's, it's been completely mitigated. But having, having him on the ground at least provides for the ability for, for critical information to be delivered to our officers, whether it's at briefings or through bulletins that he sends, et cetera. But we do, our, our information systems do, I, I, I wouldn't say they're fluent with one another, but they do talk to one another, and we do have the ability to, to share data. Again, I, I would expect, honestly, Mayor, that that would be something that would improve over time as we, as we increase that footprint or that level of involvement with the district.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Everybody's favorite, the motorcycle officers. I just wanna point out here on this slide that the average response time to Priority One calls, which is the top-left box, it's 5.3 minutes. And we responded to 908 of one, of those type calls. And we did feel the need to define that. Down at the bottom, you'll see what the Priority One call is defined by, you know, essentially in-progress felonies, you know, life-threatening, in-progress calls. The other thing I would point out here, too, is, is we've had some discussion recently about video in the city. And the, the second bullet point on the right does, does indicate that, you know, all of our cars are outfitted with in-car cameras. And we're also in the process of rolling out our body-worn cameras. What we're doing with that is that's, that's an incremental rollout for us, because we're dealing with some workload issues associated with managing that data. And so we've just found that taking maybe smaller bites at that apple is a prudent way to, to, to go forward. But the plan is to have all, all, all officers in uniform equipped with those cameras. And I expect that'll happen by the end of the year with, with certainty.
Chief, glad to hear that, on the, on the body cameras. Is, your target response time is 5 minutes? Is that correct?
Yes, sir, the, the, I mean, the industry standard, if you will, which is, which varies a little bit, is generally 5 minutes or less for a Priority One call is, 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 is meeting that standard. So we're, we're slightly higher at 5.3. I, I've seen this number range over the last several years, that I've been tracking it, all, you know, up to 5.6, 5.7. And we, we look at that quarterly, and then on occasion, it'll dip slightly below 5. We, we track that because I think it's important to people, that when they pick up the phone and they have an emergency, you know, they're obviously not calling to tell us that they're having a great day, they actually need somebody there. So I think that number is vitally important. That also provides us with some level of, of a real quick assessment of, of staffing level, honestly.
Is there, in addition to staffing, is there anything that would enable you to improve that response time?
Well, I'm gonna get to another slide in a moment that, that provides some data relative to our dispatcher efficiency, and how quickly they turn those around. They turn them around really quickly. I, I think this number frankly just boils down to the number of units that we have out at any given time who are available to respond and not committed to other, other calls for service.
Okay, so it's, it's a manpower, I mean, if you had more officers...
Essentially, yes.
Okay, thank you.
This picture of the K-9 unit, and our, our, the, our K-9 there on the left with the cozy shot in front of the fireplace is, that's blue, that's the, that's the K-9 that was shot recently in the armed robbery case at Jamba Juice about a month ago. And by the way, the, the blue is, is working his way back into work already. We're fortunate that there was no bone involvement, he was shot twice in that, in that leg, and, and again, no bone involvement. So he's, he's gonna be back and ready to go. Slide on our Investigative Services Division, that's one of, that's one of our other, other divisions. Again, with the same layout as before, with the staff and the units represented in that division, you'll see that that division has a lot of units, detectives and forensics, animal services lives in that division, POP, crime prevention, and our volunteers. We mentioned, too, on this slide, in the, in the center of the, the narrative side, that we do, you know, we're really, we partner, we have a really great partnership with Weave, and we're really proud of that. And, and that's, that allows us to be more responsive to incidents of domestic violence. And, and I'll, I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. So here's some, some data on the Investigative Services Division. And the, the thing I wanted to mention that, that I referenced a second ago is the bottom bullet there. We've done, we've gone through some reorganization recently, and we're actually creating a, a unit in... unit in detectives that we're calling the Family Services Unit. That's going to focus largely on those crimes that affect families, that would be domestic violence, obviously crimes against children, et cetera. And, and so, rather than have those cases kind of sent out to general detectives who might have a caseload that, you know, includes other offenses, we're, we're creating this unit to handle those things exclusively. And that, that WEVE advocate will be part of that unit. We're also going to add a CSO to that unit that will, will help with some missing persons cases and, and some educational outreach that we envision being part of that unit going forward. Another part of Investigative Services is POP and Crime Prevention. As you're all aware, we've been, we've been working really hard over the last few months to increase our, our presence in the community and, and essentially double down on our relationship with the community, recognizing how important that is. And so, this, this unit is largely responsible for, for those events.
Chief, have they been able to help with the lady and gentleman that were speaking on their neighborhood where the bullet went through the house? Have they been able to raise a presence over in that neighborhood?
I'll, I'll have to check into that. That, that would be a good, a, a perfect opportunity for that kind, for a, you know, I, I imagine there's a neighborhood watch over there, but if there's not, that would be a, that would be an ideal spot for it.
Okay.
And some crime prevention tips and things of that nature, yeah.
Quick question, is the POP and the Crime Prevention Unit one in the same then?
No, actually, I mean, I mean, they are, they're under the same umbrella of supervision and management, but the, but the POP unit are, are officers.
Oh, I see.
That are out, you know, working the more ongoing neighborhood issues, the more intensive, chronic kind of neighborhood issues, much like we heard about earlier. And then, the Crime Prevention Officers are actually two CSOs that go out and they do the neighborhood watch meetings and things of that nature. And of course, as I mentioned, Animal Services falls under the Investigative Services Division. Volunteers, super proud of our volunteers, I know you all are as well. It does indicate here on the slide, and I, I know it to be true, in 2016, they donated over 13,000 hours of their time, providing a lot of the services that you'll see referenced on the left side of the screen. We're very proud of them, and honestly, we'd be hard-pressed to do, to be as effective as we are without them. And then, our Support Services Division, which is our communications, our dispatch, property and evidence, and our records bureau. Here's that number I referenced earlier relative to 97.45% of the 911 calls are answered within 10 seconds in our center. That's a really good number. And we're, we're proud of that. And in the bottom-right corner, I would point out that, you know, they did, they took 156,000-plus calls. So, they're pretty, they, they stay pretty busy.
Yeah, that's incredible.
And then, I mentioned at the onset that, you know, part of the purpose of this report was to provide some, some, you know, some information and, and, and to, to the public that, that is, you know, transparent and provide some, again, some screenshot of, of some issues that I know people care a lot about. So, this slide deals with use of force, that falls under our Professional Standards Bureau. On the, on the right is a, is a pretty standard pie chart that breaks out the uses of force, of which there were 75 in 2016. Of note is that there were 75 instances where force was, was used out of 60,000 contacts in, in almost 2,000 arrests. The other thing I want to point out relative to use of force is that we have a process, we have an internal process where we review every, every use of force incident. And you'll notice the biggest shaded area of the pie chart, which represents 81%, are cases where, that represent control holds. We have a device that, that's referred to as the wrap, that's sometimes utilized to actually literally wrap the legs of someone who's inclined to either kick officers, other people, or the patrol car. Sometimes people kick windows out of cars, et cetera. So, whenever that device is used, that, that's a, that's considered a restraint device. So, 81% of the use of force cases that we reviewed involved either a restraint device or control holds. Back to my point about our, our reviews, we review every single one, whether it's a control hold or it's a, it's a deadly force incident. That starts from the sergeant, we have an intake sergeant who's on duty, who will go out and, and take the information that led to the use of force. They'll, they, they photograph, they take statements from everyone involved, that gets referred up to that sergeant's watch commander, then it goes through a use of force committee review, an internal committee review, and it culminates with me. I review every, I, I see every single use of force case. And I think that's important for people to know. I, you know, I, I, I think there's some value in, in knowing that, that, that the, the chief of police and the command staff are not ignorant to what's going on out on the street. So, I'm, I'm proud of the fact that we review all of those. And honestly, the fact that there's only 75 is, makes it doable. So, any questions on that?
What, Chief, I do have a question. In, in terms of a, a typical-sized city, what, what would you normally expect to see in terms of uses of force? Maybe a percentage is probably easier to.
Yeah, I, that would require a, some speculation on my part, it'd be hard to say. I, I think that there might be some, well, I, I can safely say there would be some cities, even comparatively sized ones, where those numbers would be far greater. There might also be some where they were less. And I'll, I'll tell you why I think that is, is that, you know, you'll notice that that 81% of the pie there, we, we count things as uses of force that, that everybody doesn't count. You know, the, the use of that wrap device that I just explained, even, you know, control holds, or, or sometimes people have to, have to be handcuffed on the ground in order to do that safely for everybody involved. Not, not everybody captures those as uses of force, they reserve those, those reviews for the more traditional uses of force, like, you know, pepper spray, batons, things of that nature. But we've just, we, we, we just feel like we should capture all of that. And so, that's.
So, that's even a conservative number, even 75?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Chief, I have a question.
Sure.
I'm, I'm sure you're familiar with the whole procedural justice training that's happening regionally, and I wasn't sure if Elk Grove was a part of that or not. I, I did get the opportunity to go to that three-day training at CHP, and I thought it was, I thought it was great. I just wasn't sure if that's something your department is looking at, at taking part in or not.
I, I so much appreciate your questions tonight, because we're right on, you're on the same wavelength with me. That's coming up on a, perhaps one of the next slides.
No.
In fact, there it is.
I was wondering, like, why is she asking all these questions? She should know.
So, the bottom-right corner refers to what Councilmember Nguyen just, just talked about, which is principal policing training. You, you might, you might remember the speaker earlier who talked about implicit bias. And, and that's what this training focuses on, is the fact that, you know, we ought not act as if there are not implicit biases at work in all of us as human beings. But this training explores those and certainly, you know, brings those to the surface, so that frankly, they don't become issues as we work with the community. And so, that's, that, that, that training is about that, it's about procedural justice, which at its essence is just treating people fairly, irrespective of what they look like or where they come from. That our job is to do that. And, and so, on that topic, we are all, yes, everybody's going to go through that training. That's on the list for 2017, that's why we saw fit to put it on that slide, because I think it's important.
One of the things that Sacramento has done, and the county is doing as well, too, is they're bringing in community leaders to take part in the community component of it and talk to the officers. In a sense of, we're in this together, and let's work on this together, and understanding the community side part of that. So, I hope that that's something you're going to continue on as well, too.
Absolutely. And in fact, when, when the Department of Justice, who initially put this training out, they gave, they gave priority to agencies who had a community member as part of their instruction team, because it's so, because it is important. I agree with you.
Actually, I, I'm going to go the other direction. Is it, is it possible to incorporate some, that kind of training? And maybe we do in our, in our city leadership program, do we?
We would need to incorporate it, we don't have that, and we can certainly look to put that in place.
Yeah, I, I think it should go both ways, thank you.
So, this slide briefly, again, this was, this is, this is put forth in the interest of transparency, rather than be asked for it, we're, we're reporting our number of Internal Affairs investigations that, that were completed during 2016. You'll note there that we, there, there were 17 formal complaints that were investigated. Nine of those came from outside of our department, from citizens, as, by way of citizen complaints. And eight were internally generated. That means that we internally saw something that caught our attention enough that merited further investigation relative to policing ourselves, if you will, seeing behavior or something that, that required further investigation. So, that's, there were nine, nine externally-generated complaints, eight internally-generated complaints. And then, you'll see the disposition of those cases. And, and again, rather than just tell you that, you know, one resulted in exoneration and two were unfounded, we wanted to provide the, the actual definitions that, that, that go with those, so that people know what those, what that means. Good? So, we've talked a lot tonight about diversity. This, this, this slide presents our demographic information from our organization. And, you know, while you're looking at that, I, I was asked earlier about specific recruiting efforts, I think the city manager mentioned earlier in her remarks, that we, you know, we would be, we'd be participating tomorrow in the Urban League Recruiting Event, Sacramento City College. We're, we're, we're getting ourselves to, to every college event that we can find, where we can set up a table and send some folks out. As, as you know, Councilmember Nguyen, we're involved with the Links to Law Enforcement. We have some of our staff that work with the Asian Pacific Islander cohort and the African-American cohort, we've certainly had staff there in the past, and will continue to do that. That's not necessarily established to be a, a recruitment tool, but I think that, again, as we work with those diverse groups of the community, then perhaps that's a natural dividend or a byproduct of that relationship. We have an Explorer post here for, for youngsters that want to be involved with the Police Department. That provides another opportunity for not just inclusion, but diversity. You know, we've hired actually a couple of, of police officers out of that group, which is nice, nice to see. Some of you may have heard recently, our Reserve Officer Program has been suspended, and, and some of the reasons for that, the, the most priority reason for that was the fact that we were out of compliance with, with posts relative to their training. That Reserve Program had been set up as a, as, you know, essentially, when, when police officers from our department or others retired, they would become Reserve Officers and do certain jobs. And I, I just, they, they were out of compliance, miserably out of compliance with posts, which put us all at risk. And so, that, that wasn't a good idea. So, what we've decided to do is suspend that program. At the, when it does come back, it's likely to come back in a different, with a totally different look, that will involve, you know, a volunteerism aspect and provide another opportunity for the community to, to join us. So, that, that's, that's my hope with that program. Any, any questions on any of the numbers there or anything? I'm happy to, I, they're there because I, I, we, we believe in diversity. I mentioned at the beginning, you know, for us to establish public trust and to be effective in the community, we, we, we need to, to not only celebrate diversity in the community, but be as diverse as possible internally. So, we're a work in progress, this is an honest, at-the-moment assessment. It doesn't match the numbers of this, of the city quite clearly, I wouldn't stand here before even represent that it does. But I will submit that we've made progress here in the, in the last couple of years, and we're, we're working feverishly to continue on that path.
Chief, by looking at these numbers, it looks like the sworn and professional staff, Asian Pacific Islanders and African-Americans will probably be the, the top target group to match up with the city population, is that correct?
That's accurate, Mayor. I, I would also point out that, you know, if you look at the sworn staff numbers, those are the police officers. 12.2% are female, and 87.8 are male. Our city demographics, while it wasn't on the slide, you know, it's roughly 50/50, it's probably 51/49 female versus male. So, we've got some work to do there as well. But in terms of, of the demographic information relative to ethnicity, yeah, you're right, those are the areas that we, that we are working on.
I see.
Absolutely. We're actually not far from the city, from, from the city number in a couple of those categories, but there's, there are others that we, that we're quite a ways off.
You mentioned earlier some reasons why, in terms of ethnic diversity, why it might be a challenge to recruit. Is it, is it, or would it be correct to conclude that you have the similar challenges in the, in the gender category as well?
I mean, we do have challenges in the category, they're obviously, you know, they're not for the same reasons. Although, I, I would, you know, as, as a father of two girls, I say this, I, I don't know how thrilled I would be about them going into, to law enforcement, I would support them if they chose to do it. I don't know how much that influences, you know, dinner table discussions at home, I, I'm not sure. But, but it is a challenge, and it's something, again, that we're mindful of and, and going to continue to work on.
Good.
Are the others, are we competitive with other cities also? You know, I, I know that they shop around when they get out of the academy. Some are lucky to get hired right away, others do look around, and so, I just want to make sure that we're competitive, and if we're not, what can we do to help with that?
I appreciate that very much, but I have to be honest, I, I mean, you all provide great support to me. I, I frankly, I'd be hard-pressed to think of something to ask for. We were, from, from a salary and benefit package, we're very competitive. From a work environment perspective, also very competitive. This is a great city, I mean, you all have heard, heard me say this, and I know you feel the same way. That's why I work here. And so, it's easy for me to talk about that with prospective candidates. And we have a very supportive community, and people know that. And so, we, we're, we're not hurting for applicants. It's, it, it is competitive, though, because everybody's hiring, you know, they're, the hiring wheels are all turning again. And so, we, we find that we'll send a background investigator out to an agency, and there, there may have already been three or four there from other agencies, so we're all, we're scratching each other's eyes out trying to get to the same good candidates. It is competitive.
Chief, in some areas, don't they have the opportunity for, like, discounted home loans, some type of subsidy?
That was, I, I don't know how prevalent that is today, Mr. Detrick, but in, in the past, I can remember that happening, signing bonuses, you know, things of, of that nature.
Well, if, if.
I'll, I'll be happy to give some thought to that and, and even kind of examine the landscape and.
Yeah, if, because if we really, you know, continue to get jammed up all the time, we got to have to kind of think outside the box, and those may be some, some other opportunities to, it may not be with, actually with salary, but. And Laura, I don't know if there's any type of grants or anything, or anything that's available that we could do something like that, or even possibly we put a fund together, take a portion of our general fund that we allocate for that, because I know we're not making any money in the bank, so if we gave somebody a very low-interest loan, we'd probably be more, make more money than if, what we're getting in the bank, and then it's an investment in our police force, in our community.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any grant programs that would support that kind of measure. Most of those programs are, are generally funded through discretionary funds. So, I think we will, between the chief and I, will get some research done, we'll probably pull Sarah Bontrager in as well, and see what we can do as far as the, the, the housing component, and then what, whatever other incidents there might be.
Perfect.
I, I like the housing component, but I will say that they must live in the city.
I agree.
Duly noted. This is just a closing picture, or pictures, collage of pictures from some community events. And then, brief, really quickly, I just wanted to provide some information relative to our award recipients, I mentioned that ceremony earlier, these are, this is our list of folks who were, who were honored this year for various things. And then, I mentioned earlier the turnover, this, this tells quite a story. You know, on the top are the people that were promoted, myself included, during this, during 2016, and then down in the bottom section are all the retirements that we, we saw during 2016. Which is the other thing that we're grappling with is, is, you know, organizational change and things of that nature that come with that kind of turnover, which I, and I'm really proud of our staff, I think we're managing that, managing that well, but that's, it's, it's not easy. That's, that's a lot of turnover, there's a lot of institutional knowledge that leaves with, with folks when they've, they put 30 years in.
Yeah. Chief, when it comes to promotions, what, what are you doing to encourage folks to, to take, assume leadership roles? leadership roles in the department? And what kind of support are you giving them?
Well, we try to, I mean, we try to treat that evenly, so that everybody gets the same opportunity, first of all. And then we, you know, we really endeavor to expose them to opportunities to lead on a, what I would consider to be a, you know, kind of a pinch-hit basis. Let's say, for instance, the sergeant or the supervisor is away, at vacation, off for a day, at a class, what have you, then we'll identify someone to step up and to assume that role. That kind of exposure, we found is very developmentally beneficial to folks. And it also gives them a chance to kind of test-drive the position a little bit, honestly. Not everybody wants to be a supervisor. That's the reality. And so sometimes when you do that, you find that, okay, I either really like this and I'd like to pursue this as a path, or I don't, and I'm content to stay where I am. So we do that. We do some, you know, we do a lot of informal mentoring. One of the things that I think we're going to explore, you know, during this year is a more formal mentoring program, just to ensure that, you know, anybody who's interested has the opportunity and the ability to connect with someone that can, can help them, you know, pursue their own career dreams.
Yeah. And that's great. I was also wondering, do you, do you offer, or, yeah, through the department, offer sending them to courses or training camps?
Oh, sure. There's a lot of training, you know, along those lines. You know, we can send, we send some folks to training. There's some local training, that's kind of one-day leadership seminars, to go hear somebody speak on leadership. And it's not always law enforcement. A lot of times, it's, you know, corporate leaders that come and speak, and that really influences people. So, yeah, we do all that. We try to, we try to provide all that to everybody. But again, I like to do that evenly, as opposed to just reaching out and saying, hey, you look like you might be interested. Let me just provide this for you. I think it's important that we be objectively fair about how we roll that out.
Sure. Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Chief, there are a number of these people that had been promoted, and I didn't know about it until I saw their ten of bars or their stripes. So right away, you can give us a report of, like, promotions, so that when we see them, we can congratulate them or send a quick email?
Sure. We could definitely-
Be helpful for me.
I'd actually appreciate that. I think that's, that kind of recognition's very important. And I appreciate it a lot. I know I-
And that'll be the same thing for Laura and your end event as well.
So with that, I think I've more than exhausted my time. I apologize for being so long-winded. I don't know if you have any other questions?
Your three minutes is up.
Questions?
Tamara, thank you, if you're still here, for putting this together. It's well done.
Yeah, Tamara did a really good job. Thank you for that.
I want to commend you, Chief Knoblet, and everyone in the department. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
I agree, hundred percent. Great job on the, I'm not sure if you're almost, almost a magazine.
It's kind of a magazine.
Yeah, very good.
All right, this time, I want to open for public comment, and we have a speaker signed up, actually a couple. Mr. Michael Manasky. Step on up, please.
I've submitted my written remarks, and you probably already have them. I'm going to make a couple of minor edits and would like to reserve the right to resubmit this to the clerk electronically. But I'm going to read in my edits. The Elk Grove Police Department annual report paints a rosy picture of conditions of safety for our citizens. It reports but does not comment upon a fifty percent increase in rape, although the police chief has said that a more liberal definition of the crime is the culprit. I beg to differ. It is well documented and understood that rape is a crime of power over another. Its very definition is taking, is a taking by one from another. Unlike larceny, rape seizes control and suspends self-respect. That's why it's not well-reported. Among other things, it's a crime of humiliation of another. The chief's report accounts for three hundred domestic violence cases investigated by the city's detectives last year. There's no explanation for the dramatic rise in rape, no further description of the problem, and no solutions offered. It's also well documented and understood that domestic and intimate partner violence escalates during conditions and times of deprivation of financial support. Hard economic times correlate directly with increased domestic and intimate partner violence homelessness and mental illness. There are many public policies which adversely affect our community and make it unsafe. I'll mention two. First, low minimum wages maintain financial anxiety in many households. A fifteen-dollar-per-hour minimum wage would not only enable persons to afford to live here, but also be a major boost to the economy of the city. The poorest of us spend all our income on basic human needs. It goes without saying that housing isn't affordable when you haven't enough money for the rent. Second, the Police Department currently consumes fifty-eight percent of general fund revenues. I have proposed a ten percent set aside of police funds for social and mental health services. Public health and safety are inextricably linked. Cops aren't social workers. Cops don't do mental health. Both social services and mental health services are inadequately funded. Yet each year, we can find ways to buy more guns, ammo, and special weapons which do not demonstrably improve public safety and health. A three million dollar annual set aside from the city Police Department to Sacramento County Social Services and Mental Health Services could put a huge dent in these funding deficiencies. Better still, spending ten percent of police funds on social and mental health services will reduce the incidence of domestic and intimate partner violence and homelessness and will improve mental health in the community. Who are the victims of domestic and intimate partner violence homelessness and mental illness? They are women, military veterans, children, dependents of victims. They are disabled people. These are the people forgotten in this report and in the code enforcement report on homelessness. When I look at the dais, I see white men, and appointee, and enforcers of business as usual. There is no diversity in imagination on this council.
Can you wrap it up, please, sir?
This, there is no diversity in imagination on this council, this corporate firm that does the bidding of political donors. I see gambling and shopping as the economic model to enriching yourselves and your political cronies. I see an economic monoculture of risk-taking and abandonment of civic responsibility. When this corporate firm builds the casino, we citizens need not wonder whether domestic and intimate partner violence homelessness, mental illness, and economic ruin will visit us with increasing frequency, because it will, in spades. It's high time the boys on the dais before us grow up and act like men of responsibility to make choices which benefit more of us than the ever-growing Police Department, their affluent sponsors, and themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Manasky. For the record, I'm Knoblet. Next speaker, Nathan Champion.
Thank you. I'll try not to take up too much more time. I'd really like to thank the police again, having had a lot of interaction with them recently. The community service officers did come out to my neighborhood watch group. I'm the captain of our neighborhood watch, and they did give a presentation, and we are actively involved with them. Also, the pop officer is and does have an active case on the house that I mentioned earlier. So those community resources are there, they are being used. Also, I've interacted with probably half of the patrol officers, at least the ones that service might be. Contrary to the gentleman before me, I would actually like to ask the council to increase the number of patrol officers, not with a deficit from some other category of the Police Department, but if and when the budget would allow, I'd like to see more patrol officers, and here's why. As good as our Elk Grove Police officers are, all of us are human, and when we're overburdened with work, we shed the easiest thing. One of those things is an individual's maybe motivation to collect a police report. My personal opinion is that maybe our numbers aren't actually as good as what's in that report. And here's why. My personal experience is that I had an issue in front of my house where I was assaulted. We didn't know the names or the people involved, and the officer at that point was reluctant to actually take a police report. The community was great. We did have pictures from my video cameras. We were able to put them out on social media. We had their names overnight, but it was still like pulling teeth to get the officer to come back out and take a police report. And that's probably because, you know, it was a simple battery. It was just, you know, somebody slapped me. Okay, so it's not a big deal in the grand scheme of things. However, out of that came that, you know, one of them was on probation or parole or something like that. He was found later. They went and did a, they went and visited him, and at his house, he was in illegal possession of a firearm. He had a previous felony. The other two, they did investigation on and found out that they were known gang members, right? So this is what comes out of finding small crimes, right? When we have the, when we have the personnel available to be able to investigate it a little bit deeper, we actually can find out whether somebody is actually harmful to our community, or whether maybe it was just an isolated incident. And then lastly, because my time's about up, I'm also a lead on Next Door, and I see a lot of community members that are concerned with, you know, teenagers and drug use at parks and things of that nature. I'm not saying that there needs to be a contact between the police and those teenagers, but even just a patrol car driving by the park at the right time of the day is going to be enough to discourage these teenagers from doing that at a park. So, thank you very much. Those are my thoughts for the council.
Nathan, thank you for coming in, speaking twice tonight, but also for being a champion of your neighborhood, because that's really what brings the neighborhoods together. You know, I've spoke many times at the beat meetings, you know, we have roughly one hundred and thirty-five-plus or minus sworn officers to cover forty-two square miles, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. So at any one time, we don't have a ton of officers on the street, but we have one hundred and seventy thousand approximately people that can feed information back into us. So, again, appreciate you stepping up and being a responsible resident.
I think we all have a responsibility. Otherwise, we just get what we get.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan.
Seeing that there are no additional speakers, I want to close public comment and want to open up for our council deliberation and direction.
It's just a receiving file.
No, I guess we kind of asked the questions and deliberated already, so. All right, next item.
Take us to item ten point two, which is receiver report on the status of homelessness in Elk Grove.
Sarah, if I could stop you just for one second. Laura, could you elaborate one issue that came up relative to mental health issues and things like that? I mean, isn't that, doesn't the county get the money to support those type of actions?
Yes, they do. It's funded through state and federal dollars and supplemented by county general fund.
What is our relationship with the county to be able to make sure those services are offered properly?
Well, you're going to find out in this presentation that Sarah is going to provide what conversations we've had with the county relative to mental health and social services for the homeless, and how we're trying to improve that relationship. And then, just with general mental health and social service issues, it's, you know, communication with the county. I mean, but they're, I mean, they're not, you know, funded to do everything that they need to do. I mean, so, you know, they are, you know, they have their own struggles, but any federal state money that comes for social service or mental health issues is going to come through the county of Sacramento. I mean, that's part of their job as a subdivision of the state.
Are we getting our fair share of service for the money that's allocated to the ratio of people that we have?
I don't have any, I don't have a good answer for that. My uneducated guess would probably be not, because of, my guess is that the more urban areas of the city and county are going to demand more services than we do.
Because what, the part that bothers me, that I brought on almost every financial issue that we do, that everybody comes to us to be, any function within side the city limits, they want us to be the savior, but they're responsible to other people, and they get those funds. So really, the people who are receiving the funds need to take ownership and responsibility for what they're being paid to do.
Well, the mayor and I will be attending a city-county meeting on March the fifteenth, and we will be, we'll add that to the agenda of items that we talk about.
Perfect. Thank you. Sorry for the delay, but it teed you up.
No worries. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Sarah Bontrager, your Housing and Public Services Manager. Tonight, I'll be talking to you about the state of homelessness in Elk Grove. Some things, some highlights from the presentation. We have approximately fifty chronically homeless in Elk Grove. Chronically homeless means they've been homeless generally for at least a year, or they've been homeless at least four times in the last three years. We do offer several options for homeless folks, including a winter shelter and transitional housing. We are recommending, ultimately, we'll talk about some strategies. Ultimately, we're recommending the funding of a navigator who would perform outreach to the homeless, and also increasing coordination of our social services, both of the nonprofits within Elk Grove, the nonprofits faith-based groups, individuals, and also increasing our participation regionally in the solution for homelessness. And we are not recommending tonight that the council consider any additional ordinances or enforcement efforts, such as an anti-camping ordinance. And I'll talk a little bit about why that is. So currently, our Police Department, over the last six months or so, has counted the folks that they come in contact with on a regular basis. There are about fifty homeless individuals that they've come in contact with currently living on the streets, including in vehicles, or in a nightly shelter, which would be our winter shelter at this time of year. This is likely not all of the homeless that exist. Many of them are fairly good at staying out of, out of the sight of law enforcement. However, we did last year have nine hundred police or code enforcement calls related in some way to homelessness. It's a little bit difficult to tell how many of those actually involved a homeless person. Sometimes people are, the caller will report seeing a homeless person upon further investigation. It turns out they're not homeless. Our system doesn't really allow us to get into that nuance, although we are attempting to better that tracking. And in an effort to reduce the calls for service and connect homeless with services, police and code enforcement have begun more proactive patrols to reach out to homeless residents. So the services that we currently offer, we have in the last, primarily in the last five years, we have developed a range of services. A key one is the Winter Sanctuary. Our Elk Grove Heart Homeless Assistance Resource Team, which is a nonprofit, they operate the twelve-week winter shelter. It rotates among churches, so a church can host a week or two weeks. They provide the dinner and sleeping accommodations for the residents. The intake is done at the Elk Grove United Methodist Church down in Old Town. They have room for up to twenty homeless people per night. In some cases, when it's raining, they have reached their capacity and have had to go to a lottery system to award spaces in the winter shelter. From the winter shelter, we try to draw from, from the winter shelter population when it's operating to fill our transitional houses. The city funded two transitional houses. Both are owned by Sacramento Self-Help Housing, and Heart provides the mentoring for the clients who live there. One of them serves mostly single adults, and the other one serves homeless families. Depending on their circumstance, tenants can stay somewhere between three and twelve months, and while they're there, they get a comprehensive set of benefits. Case management from Sacramento Self-Help Housing, which is kind of the push. You need to work on these things, get this done, so you can find housing. And then the Heart- on these things, get this done, so you can find housing. And then the Heart folks provide the mentoring, the help and encouragement to actually get those tasks done. We are also recently, the city purchased a home for permanent shared housing, an eight-bedroom house, which will be filled primarily by those exiting transitional housing, so folks who've been successful in transitional housing. The bedrooms there will rent for about $400 to $500 per month, and the tenants can stay as long as they need to. They do receive some limited services while they're in the house to assist them in maintaining their housing and in moving on, if that is their goal. We also recently got access to what's called a rapid rehousing program. This is a cooperation between the state and the three cities, Rancho Cordova, Elk Grove, and Citrus Heights, and the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. The funds are administered through Volunteers of America, and they basically provide usually three months of rental assistance to folks who need some assistance, but after that three-month period are determined that they can probably continue to pay their rent. We also have our food bank that provides food boxes tailored to homeless needs and clean clothing, and they can provide food stamp benefits access as well. And we have several churches in the area that provide regular meals, either weekly or monthly, targeted towards lower-income people, including the homeless. And finally, for those who are homeless or who are at risk of becoming homeless, we have our housing counseling agency, Sacramento Self-Help Housing. They provide counseling during business hours weekdays, over the phone, and one day a week. They are actually here in Elk Grove. They are located in the Elk Grove United Methodist Church. They maintain a list of regional housing resources for extremely low-income households as well. So some of the strategies that we've discussed, the first one is a homeless navigator. The homeless navigator is typically someone with some social work training. We would likely contract with Sacramento Self-Help Housing, which provides a navigator to Citrus Heights, and they've provided very favorable feedback as to how that's going. The goal of the navigator is to actually get out on the street. They can either address the homeless... We can tell them which homeless we want them to target, or they can go out and walk the trails and look for folks, and help them to access services and benefits. Many of the homeless would qualify for SSI, or disability income, but don't know how to go about getting it. The... One of the primary reasons that we're recommending a navigator is because it would take the social work function away from the police department and the code enforcement folks, so that they could focus on their chief role of enforcement rather than trying to help folks. We estimated the cost would be about $25,000 for the remainder of this fiscal year, and the police department has identified a state funding source to be used for that. It would be about $50,000 for next fiscal year, and we see the same funding source being used for that. The second strategy, which we are already in the process of implementing, is improvements to our social services coordination. So trying to make sure that everyone is aware of all the resources that are out there for homeless, especially some of the faith-based organizations and individuals who are out there providing services, services or food or clothing on a kind of intermittent basis. We also want to focus on improving our local coordination with Heart and our regional coordination. And to that end, the city has now a spot on the regional continuum of care. Sacramento steps forward. We are on both their advisory board and their performance review committee, and we are working with the Sacramento County on the No Place Like Home Working Committee. No Place Like Home is a special funding source set aside specifically for housing with a mental health service component. So this strategy likely wouldn't require any additional money. We could cover it with existing staff time. So another strategy we wanted to present for your consideration, the county is considering something similar, or will be at their March meeting, would be a housing voucher program. This would be a new pilot program for us. If the county chose to move forward with theirs, I think we could probably work collaboratively with them to develop a program that could be implemented for Elk Grove and for the county. But basically, it would provide some modest rent assistance for people to live in existing housing. So rather than buying new... Building new apartments, we would be just subsidizing existing housing. And we would, if the council directs us to pursue the strategy, we would look to target those homeless folks that consume significant public safety resources. One of the challenges in this approach is the difficulty in finding willing landlords. Right now, the rental market is very tight. We're actually seeing that even for folks who get Section 8 vouchers through the county, that some of them are not able to find a landlord who will accept it. So a key part of this strategy would be outreach to landlords and working with a group of landlords who are willing to take a chance on some of these clients. At this point, we don't have a good estimate of the cost, so that's something we would need to return with, but we could likely use some of our Affordable Housing Fund to fund a program like that. And then the fourth strategy is whether we want to look at new ordinances or increased enforcement. At this time, we believe that implementing the other three strategies I spoke about, the navigator improved coordination, and perhaps a voucher program, would have more impact on actually reducing the homeless problem than, say, an anti-camping ordinance. We do have a number of existing resources, which I'm sure Shane could talk about in depth, that code enforcement and police can use to address homelessness or issues caused by homelessness. Anti-camping ordinances throughout the state have seen different levels of success, and also have been legally challenged in many places. It can be hard to enforce them if you can't show that there are beds available for the people that you're citing, and right now, there are not beds available in most cases. We are working on an ordinance addressing the storage of personal property in public places, which would not be limited to homeless only, but could be another tool in the toolbox for addressing some of the blight issues. So our staff recommendation is to fund a navigator, to direct staff to improve the coordination of social service efforts, and to allow staff to further explore available options for improving homeless housing. And that could be through partnerships with other agencies, or it could be through developing our own strategies.
So is... With the affordable housing that we have, is there any restrictions on whether somebody has to be an Elk Grove resident, or can somebody from outside of Elk Grove who qualifies get into that type of housing?
So for our transitional housing and for our new permanent shared housing project, we do have a preference for Elk Grove residents. So before they could even ever look at taking someone from outside of Elk Grove, they would have to ensure that there is absolutely no Elk Grove person waiting for a spot in one of those properties, which is practically never going to happen. However, our... Most of our affordable housing complexes, the big ones that we've built, do not have any preference for Elk Grove residents.
Maybe that's something we need to tighten up in our future funding, because, I mean, if we're going to fund low-income housing to these developers to build facilities in Elk Grove for low-income housing, then we're not offering exclusively to Elk Grove people and not to know what the point is.
We did, in the... Both street departments, we did have success in having the developer of that project set aside two units for people who are exiting transitional housing. But it is something that we could explore, whether we could ask them to have a location preference, probably for people either living or working in Elk Grove.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
I read on there somewhere that the 50 that were identified as homeless were residents of Elk Grove before. Was there any contact with them prior to them becoming homeless that was offered for services and resources before they got to that point?
We did not specifically ask that question. We do know that a lot of our homeless, not all of them, but a lot of them did have a connection to Elk Grove. Either they used to live here, or they have family and friends here. Some of them may have attempted to receive services through our housing counseling program or through other resources. Many of them do receive services at the food bank, but I don't know how many of them tried to get services before they became homeless.
And in the permanent shared housing that the city has, and you said there was eight bedrooms in there, right?
Yes.
Is that already full as we speak now?
We are working on the rehab of that facility, so we purchased it late last year, and so right now, we're going through the process of getting some improvements done to it. It needs new air conditioning unit. We have to make some remodel. It was set up as a care home facility. There are some things when you're going to fit eight people in a house that you need to redo, like you need to have more than one refrigerator, for example. So we need to change some wiring and just make some improvements there. I anticipate that you'll see in March the agreement to transfer that property over to Sac Self-Help Housing, which will own and manage it, and then they will start filling it with tenants.
I will say that I feel like the city does lack resources and services, and I think this is one of a great opportunity for us to bring outside resources and services into the city to help with this here. And I would love to work with you on the city on this. I do know of a lot of organizations that do provide mental health services, and they would come into our city and help with that. A lot of the times, the county doesn't fund it, but there are foundation, private and corporate funding that do believe in this, and that they do fund organizations to provide this service. And so we need to start looking at that if the county isn't giving us our share.
That's great. Thank you. Are there any other questions for me?
Yes, Sarah. Thank you for that presentation. I was wondering, I've read somewhere that some of the homeless population actually prefer to be homeless, and if that's true, does that... Have we reached out to the 50 that you were talking about? And in general, what strategies are there to, you know, to help those, to help that population, or segment of the population?
So, in general, there are very few... There are some, but there are very few of the homeless that would choose to remain homeless if they had a housing option. One of the challenges is that the housing option has typically been tied to strings, specifically sobriety, and many of them are not prepared for that transition. So, at the federal level, the model and the funding is shifting towards what's called Housing First, which is a low-barrier entry, meaning that the goal is to get people housed, and then, once they're housed, they're better prepared to deal with some of their issues, both mental health and substance abuse issues. It's very hard. We've found it's very hard to get folks to commit to going to a doctor's appointment, even making an appointment to get a driver's license or an ID, which you need to get into a lot of the homeless programs. It's very difficult to do that when they don't know where they're going to sleep that night. They're concerned about leaving their belongings behind, and so the goal of Housing First is, let's talk about a house. Let's get you a place to live, and then, once you're stabilized there and you don't have those worries, you're in a better position to better your circumstance. So, the statistics show that the vast majority of homeless, when that option is offered to them, will take it. Not all of them will. There are truly some people who do want to live outside.
But that... So I'm hearing you say that the folks that have mental health challenges or substance challenges, in order for you to improve that situation, you've got to get them into a stable shelter first before they'll address these changes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
The navigator that you're proposing here, the homeless navigator, would that individual... I know the details aren't here, but would that individual be tasked with taking the homeless individual to get their ID done, to get all of that? Because sometimes, if you don't have a support system, you're not going to be able to go to the meetings. You're not going to be able to, you know, get your ID done, or apply for CalFresh or whatnot. And so my assumption is that that's exactly what this navigator program is to do.
So the navigator provides connections to resources, but they can also directly take people to those resources. It's actually very challenging to even qualify for some of the homeless programs, especially those at the county level. You have to have an ID, picture ID. You have to have a social security card or a birth certificate. You have to have completed a lengthy survey, and all of the... And you have to have a third-party certification that you are homeless. And so all of those things can be very hard to obtain when you don't, you know, when you're constantly losing your belongings.
Right. I know.
So they will... They are able to make time and just take somebody down to the DMV and get them that documentation.
Okay. Great.
Any other questions? I did have a quick one. Of the 50 that's identified in Elk Grove, generally speaking, where are they usually camping?
Mostly BEAT 5, is my understanding. So that would be in the Old Town area, generally.
I see.
That's where we see most of them, not all of them.
There's a pretty big camp on the east side of the railroad tracks south of Old Town.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. At this point, want to open up to public comment, and I see our first speaker lined up is Fatima Martinez. Right after Fatima is Fred Bremmerman.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Fatima Bradley Martinez from Sacramento Self-Help Housing. I'm the Housing Services Supervisor. I'm here in support of the Elk Grove Navigator Program. A navigator would provide outreach and intervention for homeless individuals and families in the Elk Grove area. This program will be kind of modeled after what's happening in Citrus Heights right now, and it's really innovative, and it's made possible by collaboration with the city, the police department, Sacramento Self-Help Housing, community members, and businesses. We foresee success with this activity because there's the availability of housing options in the Elk Grove area, like transitional housings, the shelters, and the permanent supportive housing options that are in Elk Grove. I thank you, and I appreciate you guys letting me talk about this issue. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Fred. Following Fred is Julie Sella.
Good evening, council. I'm Fred Bremmerman. I'm involved with Elk Grove Heart, which is the organization that started in 2010 to help homeless folks in our community. I'm also the co-chair with Mark Henlund of the Elk Grove Winter Sanctuary. This is our fourth year, and I've got some good news. Tonight, we have 13 guests who are staying with us. It would have been four more, except those four have now moved into the transitional homes that Sarah was talking about. So you see, there's a direct correlation going on here. Another bit of good news, one of those chronically homeless in the 50 we were talking about, I was talking with one of our mentors tonight. He's going to be taking that person to go get a phone, because he doesn't have a phone, and he lives out on his own, literally out on his own. And a lot of what we do is trying to make that connection to help somebody move from where they're at, which is basically, you don't exist, right, to, we can help you get back into the game. And that's a lot of what we do. So the good news is, you've got a lot of people in the community who are willing to step forward and do things. We arranged with 10 different churches to put on Winter Sanctuary. This week, it's at Country Oaks Baptist. Last week, it was Living Water. Next week, it'll be Soriano Express. And these are churches that say, yeah, we'll have homeless folks come and stay overnight. We'll provide a meal. We'll even provide people who spend the night, all overnight, as supervision for the program. And we can run a 12-week program for less than $4,000. Now, it's a totally different program than what the city does downtown, which is 100 people a night, and it costs about a quarter million bucks a year. Totally different program. But the point is, you've got people here who care, and they're putting things together with you, and it's great working with Sarah. So I just wanted to say that I'm completely in support of the first item, the navigator. Our community needs that. As great and as good-hearted as we are as mentors and volunteers, we don't have the res- We don't have the resources to go, hey, there's a person who's over in Nathan's area, and can you go help them, okay? It doesn't work like that. I've got a job, and they're, you, you asked, I think, where, where these folks are staying. They're staying on the trails that I work with over at the CSD Park and Rec Department, as well as downtown. Number two, the improved social services. Yeah, this is, this is all about collaboration. We stand ready to step in and do more, but we, but we also need the help of Sarah and the team that she has. So, I hope you'll continue to not only fund what she's doing, but also empower her to, to work with us. And we work with Brian and the police department. He's got some great people in Jennifer McQ, Officer McQ, and Erin Montgomery, who we've connected with to help some of these homeless folks. And number three, the housing vouchers. It's, it's great that we have an emergency place for people to live in a transitional home, that they can stay for three months, six months, nine months, even 12 months. But at some point, they're gonna time out of that, and where are they gonna go? This is their community, they'd like to stay here, so if we can do something with vouchers and/or other permanent housing solutions, that's what we need to do. And I hope you'll consider that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Judy Sella. Following Judy is John Foley.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and council members. And I'm glad to see diversity is including a woman once again on our, on our council. Welcome, thank you. My name is Judy Sella. I am the Outreach Coordinator for CalFresh Program for Elk Grove and areas in Sacramento County. And I'm also a case manager at the Elk Grove Food Bank. I absolutely very much am in favor of the Navigator Program. I'm one of the people that the Navigator can bring the homeless to for services through the food bank. And I can arrange for them to be able to get food stamps, CalFresh Outreach. This week alone, I assisted three homeless people in Elk Grove to receive CalFresh food stamps. They're probably not part of the 50, because I count homeless people as anyone who may be sleeping in their car or doesn't have a permanent residence within the last six months. Couch servers, for example. My most recent client was a woman who's 67 years old with a heart condition, who was temporarily staying with a relative. But she lives in a controlled apartment, and she cannot continue to stay there. Sacramento Self Help Housing's trying to find a home for her. There aren't very many places available. In the meantime, I helped her get CalFresh food stamps. But she's part of the homeless population. The 50 that you see and that you hear about, and that are well-served by our police department and other services, are actually a fraction of those that are technically homeless or on the verge of being homeless. So, having a navigator out there to identify these people, show them where they can get services, help them get those services, I think that would be a boon to this community in general. People need housing, and people need food. Shelter is so important, nourishment is so important. They can't move up past that. They can't continue with their education. They can't get better jobs. Their moms come and say to me, I'm doing without dinner tonight, so my kids can eat. Or, I love February, there's only 28 days, I don't have to wait that many more days until my food stamps are activated again, or till I can come back to the food bank for food. So, I urge you very much to consider this, and don't just think it's 50 people. It's multiples of those that are in danger of also being homeless. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. John Foley. Following John Foley is Michael Manaski.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's John Foley from Sacramento Self Help Housing. I'm here tonight to congratulate you as the city mothers and fathers for the way you've been able to work with community members who have become passionately interested in the plight of the poor here in Elk Grove. And one of the reasons you incorporated was to try to develop ways to be more engaged in making sure you yourselves and your fellow citizens get the right services. We were talking earlier about difficulty sometimes of figuring out if money that goes to the county actually gets back here. Whether the money gets here or not, people still are here. And the development of PATH, now called Heart, has been one of the remarkable thing that, that we've seen in, in the Sacramento region. The homeless resource assistance teams have actually spawned look-alikes in the cities of Rancho Cordova and Elk Grove, and in the non-city of Carmichael. People who want to do something, who are anxious to help the person who's sleeping by the dumpster, who maybe they allow to sweep out their storefront, but they wanna do more. Or the person who's coming to the church to ask for a handout. The Heart groups have found ways to, to be very helpful to them here in, in town. They've been mentoring the folks that we house in the transitional homes, and have been instrumental in getting those people on their feet, or in helping us find the people in the first place. If the Navigator idea, you know, flies, and it's something like what we do in Citrus Heights, the collaboration between the Heart volunteers, the police department, and, and professional staff can really make a big difference in, in people's lives. Both in getting them things like driver's licenses and CalFresh and all that, but also in getting to know them, in being able to link them up with landlords, so they have a place to, to pay rent and stay. Or maybe connecting them back up with their families and reconnecting them in that way. It's, it's just, it's been inspiring to see the way Elk Grove has handled that. And I appreciate the continued support you're giving through your staff to the Elk Grove Heart folks and the work that they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael Manaski.
I appreciate the redefinition of homeless that Ms. Sella just gave. She sees many people at, at the food bank, I'm sure, who don't fit that hardcore homeless definition, where they're living on the trails, and these are people that are surfing from place to place. I've been on those homeless counts with the county in the past, and they, they're, it's amazing how many people you can miss. You know, you start out at 4:00 in the morning, and by 5:00 in the morning, it's, people have left the place where they were at. And there are so many encampments throughout the county. Homeless people are at great risk as victims of crime and disease. This is a public safety and health issue that needs to be addressed more vigorously. The, the idea of a navigator is certainly a useful one, but we also need a coordinator. We need somebody in the city who's gonna, who's a go-to person, so that, you know, when we see, and I've, I'm familiar with the program, with the WINS program over at United Methodist Church here on, on Elk Grove Boulevard. And it's a, it's a good one, but it's a very, very limited program. It's a stopgap only. The, we, we need a coordinator. And we need a coordinator to look at trends, to connect with other agencies, and to create an actual intervention program. $50,000 a year is not enough to hire a graduate, or a credential, or a, yeah, a graduate from a master's in social work. That's what we need. I like the ideas that have been put forth, including the one on Shelter, Shelter First, but that requires special considerations and supervisors, supervision, that really should be, it, it needs the expertise of a social worker. And I'm not saying that you shouldn't go with a Navigator program at first, but I talked about a 10% set aside from the police to go to mental health and to social services. And you're talking about $50,000, and this is only through the police department. I think we need to cough up a little bit more money on that. Mental health barriers are the greatest for abused women and our shell-shocked vets, and these are the people we see on the streets. So, I, I would encourage you to at least do what has been recommended, but to go further and to spend more money on this, because $50,000 is, is a pittance. And it's frankly, you know, the people who do those wins, those, those sanctuary programs are, are doing the lion's share of the work. And we need more than a navigator. We need somebody to actually put a program together. And I know Sarah's, you know, done a lot in terms of trying to find the funding for the homeless, or for the, for the affordable housing program. But, but we need, we need more to be able to deal with this problem, because it's, the, the 50 homeless that are hardcore on the trails are the tip of the iceberg. There's, it's a much bigger problem, and there are many people at risk. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing that there are no additional speakers, I wanna close public comment and want to open to council deliberation and direction. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I really appreciate all the, the comments and the insight. And, you know, I see Frank sitting back there, he didn't come up and speak, but I know he's, he, he retired from the school district, but he's probably working just as hard now, and he and Nancy both, and, you know, Fred and Judy. I mean, there's many of you out there that give your heart and soul to this community, and I, I can't thank you enough for that. I agree on the health and safety issue. Shane, what are we doing with the camps that are out there relative to health and safety? Because, you know, it's not only their health and safety, it's the rest of the community as well.
Yeah, the, both the police department and code enforcement either respond to calls, or they do proactive patrols in areas where we commonly know that camps exist. When the camps are found, the, if there are people there, they're contacted, and they're provided a certain amount of time, typically 48 hours or a little bit more, to move their belongings from that location. And then, if nobody's at the camp, then the camp itself is tagged with a notice that requires that they, they vacate. We currently utilize trespassing laws if they're on private property, or our own municipal code if they're on city or CSD trails in order to keep any single camp from remaining in one place too long or becoming a, a health or safety hazard in that way.
How are you addressing the, basically, outdoor restrooms?
The homeless folks themselves are, are a little creative in regards to how they do that. The Public Works Department works with us to clean up any hazardous substances, hazardous wastes that we find. And there, there are those related to camps. Most of them you find makeshift facilities, would be the best way to put it, I think, at, at the camps. Or they're finding toileting options nearby in park restrooms or various places. But Public Works partners with Code Enforcement and PD to clean up those areas and make sure that it's disposed of safely.
Okay. I mean, I, I know this is a tough issue, and Sarah, I appreciate you, you champion this on behalf of the city. I don't know how the county's gonna be able to interact, assuming the county has social workers. And do they allocate any part-time, full-time for Elk Grove?
One of the things that we talked to the county about was to provide some assistance to the level that Folsom and Citrus Heights are receiving, and they, we're working to, to get that implemented. Heretofore, we weren't receiving any service.
Okay.
So, that is, that is on course. The county will be having its workshop on homelessness issues on March 21st. And I suspect that there'll be some programs unveiled there that we may be able to avail ourselves on, but they're, you know, it's not ready for primetime yet. So, there'll be some things to look forward to over the next month that we may be able to partner more with the county on.
And I would definitely support the Navigator, basically, your first three options there. Definitely support, and is this basically like a six-month or one-year trial? And then you'll come back with a report with the results of that and see where we go from there?
Yes, we can try the Navigator for the six months. The, the organization that provides the Navigator, Self Help Housing, has applied for funding for the Navigator through our grants process, which closed today. And so, that will be considered as a part of our next fiscal year. We probably want a good year's worth, maybe 18 months, to really evaluate the success of it, because they do need time to build relationships with the homeless.
So, maybe mirror our budget for 2018, summer of 18?
I would recommend that, yes.
Okay. I'd support that.
Yeah, well, homelessness and housing affordability is, is a huge issue. I think we're all pretty aware of it, facing our entire state, not just this community. So, I'm, I'm really glad to see that we have an opportunity here to try to get ahead of it and be proactive. So, thank you, Sarah, for the educational information. Shane, I had a follow-up question from Vice Mayor's comments. So, are you able to determine if, if a Navigator was in place, would, would that have been, would that be effective in, in the cases you've been seeing? Or is the city, you guys don't have resources right now, so you just give them the 48 hours, and, and then we leave and they're left to go on devices?
I'm pleased to report that Jen McQ, the pop officer that is taking point for the police department, and code enforcement officers working jointly together, do make attempts to connect the homeless folks they encounter with either relatives in the area or services that are available. And they do a pretty good job with the tools they have in those areas. We think that the Navigator would bridge the gap that we see occurs when the homeless community are hesitant to, you know, quickly engage or to build a relationship with somebody in an enforcement authority, whether it be police or code. And so, the Navigator would be able to step in and do some of the heavy lifting on the social work end, to be able to maybe make some more progress and allow the police department and code enforcement to deal with, you know, response to calls for service that are coming in. And if necessary, down the road, deal with individuals who are resistant to services or creating disturbances or those sorts of things, and then allowing the Navigator to work with the population that is, is headed into service programs or housing programs, that sort of thing.
Okay, good, thank you. So, it does sound like it would be a positive thing, or effective, I should say. So, I, I'm definitely in support of, of staff's recommendation, the two here. You know, we could seek to employ two navigators if we needed to at that point, but it's one step at a time, I understand.
Councilwoman, when?
I appreciate Heart, Elk Grove Food Bank, and Sacramento Self Help Housing partnering together to tackle this issue, because it does take collaboration and partnership to address all the needs. I will say, I agree with Sarah that in the matter of six months, you cannot show success, especially in something like this, because it'll take anywhere between three to six months for them to get their driver's license, their birth certificate, their social security, any of that. I, I will also add that while these services should be temporarily, that we should be finding ways to make sure that they become self-sufficient, and that is connecting them to work. And what are we doing to ensure that they have that lined up? So, that way, they're not depending on the services forever. But I am in full support of the staff's recommendation.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanna echo all the comments with respect to the folks that are dedicating themselves to helping out on this issue, both with the food bank and Elk Grove Heart. And, you know, Fred, your career with the, as administrator in the Parks Department, and Frank, your career as a principal of the high school. And I think I saw Mark Headland here earlier tonight, you know, his impact with the media and communications. You all could be sitting with your toes in the sand, drinking umbrella drinks, and instead, you're kinda following your heart's desire to make an even bigger impact on your community. So, I wanna salute you for that, salute the work that the food bank is doing. And Self Help Housing for helping us out with managing our, our transitional housing. One thing, though, that I will say, Sarah, is the next house you bring better be on the west side of 99. We're getting a little concentrated over on the east side. And I look forward to the, the opportunity that the food bank can become mobile, and, and make it so that they can reach wherever folks are in need and not necessarily concentrate those services in one part of town. I support the Navigator position. I support the, the improved social services connection. I'd like to hear the report back on the vouchers, and then I'm glad to hear about the ordinance coming forward with respect to the storage of personal property in public spaces. I think the, the more tools we have to, to address it, and I, and I wanna thank Shane, your staff, and Brian, your staff, for kinda going out and trying to figure out how to help these people, and not just, what can we do to run them off or run them in? You know, I think a lot is to be said about humanity of... said about humanity of, of how we treat the least among us. And so, thank you guys for showing some heart.
Well said, members.
Councilman Hume, just to give you and the rest of the council a preview of things to come. At the next council meeting on March the eighth, we will have a presentation from Michelle Dozier of, of the Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency to talk to you all about the housing voucher program and the conversations that have been occurring between the city of Sacramento and the county of Sacramento relative to the six hundred vouchers that are available, that turnover every year. And I, Supervisor Natoli will also be at the meeting as well. So the voucher program is going to be, tonight will be part of a larger discussion that'll happen here on March the eighth. So I just wanted to alert you to that as well.
Okay. As I was saying, well said, council members. And I would support staff's recommendation, specifically I support the Navigator, I support the voucher. And I think you have your direction, right, ma'am? Sarah?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, will do. Next item, please.
Take this to item ten point three, review of zoning code regulations relating to recreational vehicles.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Shane Diller, the Assistant Director of Development Services. And I'm going to briefly cover the zoning code regulations related to parking of recreational vehicles on private property. This item is in response to public comment you received at the last council meeting in response to a code enforcement case. We currently have twelve open across the city related to parking of recreational The standards for parking recreational vehicles, and we define recreational vehicles as your standard or traditional RVs and motorhomes, as well as boats, trailers, those sorts of things. So it's not just a motorhome, but it's anything that fits the zoning code definition of a recreational vehicle. It took effect in August two thousand and six, and the standards in the code allow for recreational vehicle parking in the side yards between homes or the backyard of a home, or on the street for up to seventy-two hours. But they are prohibited in what's called the front yard setback and in the street side yard setback, which is specific and exclusive to corner lots. The section that we're discussing tonight was brought before you on February twenty-second, two thousand and twelve. And at that meeting, there was direction to amend the code so that there would be a grandfather clause, if you will, in the zoning code for anybody who had legally had their vehicles parked in the city under the old code prior to two thousand and six. And we did adopt that code section. So the current enforcement is such that we're only enforcing cases where the recreational vehicle or replacement recreational vehicle was not parked legally prior to that two thousand and six date and isn't included in that grandfather clause. The front yard setbacks vary by zoning district, and so they, they run from about twelve and a half feet to fifty feet, depending on the size of the property and how the property is zoned. The, we also have regulations in those setbacks for what you can build as far as buildings and fences and various other structures. The street side yard setback, again, is a corner lot only application, and it's the distance from the back of the sidewalk to the end of the setback, and it's typically twelve and a half feet on most locations, though it is a little larger in some other, in some of the larger zoning districts. This illustration gives you an idea as to how we apply those setbacks to the property. So the, the buildable area in the middle of the diagram is typically the home or the primary structures, and then you have the side yards and front rear yards shown there. We enforce the zoning code reactively. Even in our proactive code enforcement pilot program in two thousand and sixteen, we did not enforce the zoning code proactively. We stuck to nuisance codes, health and safety issues. And so we only respond to complaints for enforcement of the zoning code. And like I said, currently we have twelve open cases across the city. Since the two thousand and twelve amendment allowing for the grandfathering, we've had five hundred and twelve complaints regarding recreational vehicle parking, and almost a hundred percent of those closed with voluntary compliance, meaning we didn't have to assess a fee or a fine or take any sort of legal action to, to close the case. The notices did the trick and the, the recreational vehicles were moved. We also received no appeals to those five hundred and twelve cases in that time period. Code enforcement uses their standard process for these cases of issuing a notice and allowing for fifteen days to correct the violation before moving forward to additional notices and then fees and fines, ending in, you know, possible legal action, including towing the vehicle under warrant or that sort of thing. The region that we surveyed, we surveyed most of the cities and counties around our area. Four other agencies had similar standards to ours, and the others either had very little standard or no standard in regards to recreational vehicle parking. I'm not going to go detail, detail by agency here. They're in the staff report and on the slides, but you can see that it, it varies somewhat. The one thing you find is fairly common is that there's a pretty universal enforcement of the clear vision triangle at the corners of driveways and corners of streets. And that's actually a separate code section here in Elk Grove to where we would enforce that even without recreational vehicle standards specific in the zoning code. This item is brought to you this evening just briefly for information, and then if there's any feedback or direction or questions of us to answer those. Code enforcement has suspended the enforcement of the twelve open cases we currently have in response to the comment at last meeting. And if you provide direction to amend or repeal sections of the zoning code, we would take that through the planning process, through the planning commission, and then back to the council. And if you direct us to leave the code in place and to pursue completion of the enforcement processes, then we would communicate with the property owners that we'd do that. We'd provide them probably some little additional time to make some plans. Again, we're, we're not looking to generate fines or generate revenue in those sorts of ways. We just want to see the cases get closed. And these cases, not being safety issues typically, allow us a little bit of time to work with the property owner to figure out what they would need to do to store the proper, to store the vehicle properly, either on their own property or off-site somewhere. The code enforcement staff did reach out to everyone involved in the current twelve open cases to let them know of the item this evening, both on the reporting party side and on the property owner's side. With that, I'm available for questions.
Shane, out of the, out of the twelve open cases, what is the timeframe from the, what is the oldest one?
The oldest one, I'm going to take a guess because I was looking at them. I didn't write that down. The oldest one wasn't more than about maybe two and a half months old, I think, was the oldest one.
This is all less than, last ninety days or less?
Yes, yeah, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? No questions? So you know? I am curious, though. You had a chance to talk to the residents. Did you come up with any potential model that would be able to accommodate their needs in that area?
We haven't come up with anything more creative, really, than we have in regards to the grandfathering. And the, the issue we run into there is that it, whatever we would come up with would have to apply citywide. And so being able to too strategically deal with individual situations or cases isn't something that we were able to find anything in short order at least that, that would have worked there. It's really a matter of deciding what, you know, standard we want to have there in the zoning code and then making sure that we apply it, you know, even-handedly, but still working with property owners to get the cases closed. And we do it citywide. So we weren't able to come up with any individual solutions.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
One more question.
Thank you. Shane, I was just wondering, in, in like, in our HOA, if I want to do something to my front lawn or backyard or have to get permission from all my property owners around me, have you guys considered maybe some sort of exemption or leniency if, if the property owner's able to obtain permission from the surrounding property owners?
We haven't looked at that specifically or how that would, how we'd be able to apply that legally there. I, just off the top of my head, would imagine there'd be some due process issues in regards to how we'd process something like that, making sure that it's something, again, that's equitable citywide. And we, we tend in code enforcement and as a city not to delve too far into the realm of CCNRs or HOA management and those sorts of things, because those are all private agreements that apply to the properties and are recorded that way. So it's something that we could certainly take a look at and consult with legal and look for some models and various things to see if there's a way to apply that so that we accomplish what we need to do, but do it in a way to where we provide the due process necessary that this could be applied equally across the city.
I think that could be a slippery slope, too, from a legal standpoint, that here, if the, if the city was to go something that's contradictory, something that's recorded on somebody's property, even if the neighbors agreed to it and then somebody moves and somebody else moves in, they don't agree to it, I think it's a real Pandora's box. I don't know what you think, John, but...
I have to admit, I hadn't thought of it. It's, it's an interesting idea, council member, soon. I don't know that I would necessarily suggest recording something on the property. That creates title issues that you probably don't want. I think the point...
No, I mean, they've already got, they potentially, all the newer areas all have CCNRs that are...
Right, but I, I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, council members here, and I don't think you were necessarily suggesting in the fashion of a CCNR. I think what you were suggesting was something a little more informal, that if you have the permission of the surrounding neighbors, however we define that, that the code would not be enforced against that person. I think the point that Vice Mayor Detrick is pointing out, which is a good one, is what do you do about people coming and going? I guess the way you would address that is that you would have to get new consents when people came in. And frankly, it could be a workable solution from a legal perspective. I could see that there could be some enforceability and some, some logistic issues as to how do you go about enforcing that, making sure that the consents are on file. There could be some administrative burdens. I think we could handle any kind of due process issues. There could be a concern that, what we call an equal protection claim, because you're treating people different. But given the nature of this, it probably wouldn't rise to the level of a constitutional problem. It's an intriguing idea. We can take a look at it if that's what council wants to do.
Okay, thank you.
More comment on that, just one more comment on, on that one. Because it's a reactive process. The reality is if your neighbors are fine with it, it can stay, right? It's not a problem because we're not enforcing it. The only time we're enforcing it is if your neighbor calls. So then you wouldn't have the consent. So really, a practical standpoint, we're already getting neighbor consent by just the very nature of how we're enforcing this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to mention that the, the reactive nature is something that comes into play and the, what we typically see in code enforcement is that they, they call code enforcement when they in fact do not either, they're not in a position to engage with their neighbor, or they feel as though they've exhausted those, those routes. And we may put residents in a position to where they're, you know, they're, they're pitting against each other in order to, you know, sway support or gain support or that. I'm not saying it's not a workable solution. I'm just trying to think in my mind as to challenges that we may receive at the department level from folks who, you know, feel pressured into, oh, everybody but myself is fine with this and, and that sort of thing. It's, it's something we could certainly look at.
Yeah, and I understand that. But on the flip side, it enables neighbors to potentially problem solve, you know, themselves rather than, you know, we're trying to go the other direction, where take a policy that applies to everybody and try to fit, you know, maybe something, a, a unique cases, accommodate unique cases or, you know, that, you know, it's six one way, after the other, I guess. All right, thank you.
Questions? No more questions? All right. This time, want to open a public comment. We have two speakers, actually, yeah, two speakers. First speaker is Kelly Pippit. Following Kelly is Peter Aranda.
Good evening. I think I'm still awake here. I appreciate the coun, the council tonight asking the questions that you did. I think that's a great start for what we have here. I am an RV owner. I am a sole supporter of my family. We've checked in the local communities in our neighborhood to be close to our motorhome, that we're looking at about a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollar in cost monthly to just park it in a city storage parking lot. Another recommendation I kind of had for the city is to take a look at is that my husband is disabled and we have handicap plates. I had provided some pictures, thank you. And I'm wondering if because an actual RV trailer, quote unquote, can't have a disability plate on it, but my motorhome does. The city allows me to park my truck or my car anywhere in the city of Elk Grove with my handicap plates, including certain zones all but red, but they won't allow me to park my RV in my parking lot, in my own driveway. I'm probably close to fifteen to eighteen feet back from the street. I provided pictures that showed from the public street, there is your, the city wall is there. There's trees blocking it. There was a few spots that you could see my motorhome. I'm at the end of a cul-de-sac. I am not, it's not a round cul-de-sac. We're a dead end, straight on dead end. And I'm the very last house on the dead end. I think the ideas that Mr. Diller has been suggested were, were great ideas. We also would like to thank him for being in complete contact with us. He has reached out to us and instantly I email him and boom, he's right back. And I, I appreciate that as long as, as well as the council did as well. I, if, if you want me to go get signatures from my, my neighbors, they're like, we're shocked. I have another question I'd like to ask is, they said that it was reported, is if one vehicle is reported, do we do a sweep through the neighborhood to report everybody's? How does that work? I don't know if anybody could answer that question. Is it specifically just...
Shane will answer that.
Oh, okay.
I can answer that. And no, we, we don't do a sweep through the neighborhood. We generally deal with the addresses that are reported.
Gotcha.
The one thing that code enforcement officers are requested to do is if they arrive at a property and a directly adjacent property and exactly, you know, a next-door neighbor has the same violation, then we would address that because it's right there and, and it would be equitable to do it that way. But we do not do any, any sort of sweeps of side streets or other ends of the streets or any of those sorts of things.
All right, I appreciate the answer. And the reason I ask is the neighbor down the street that did have a trailer in his driveway hung over on the sidewalk, his hitch did. And I think that's what kind of started this ball rolling. He has since then put his up for sale because he doesn't want to deal with storing it and whatever. So that's kind of our concern here. Like I said, we do have handicap plates on our motorhome, and we'd like to see if the city council would take that into consideration because we're not blocking anybody's view. We're not blocking the sidewalk. We're good. I, I'm terrible on distance. I don't know if it's five feet or fifteen feet, but it's pretty far back from the actual city sidewalk. So with that, I don't know how this works at this point. I am under ordinance with the, with Mr. Diller, so I don't know what happens. Now I have fifteen days to move it. I know it's been halted, but can you tell me what happens at this point? What do we do?
There, there's a couple of different options. Why don't we see where the council goes with it?
Okay.
And then I'll touch base with you at the end and we can...
Absolutely.
I'll get, we'll get a strategy together, depending on where they go.
All right, great. I appreciate it. Any questions or pictures? I think they're pretty self-explanatory if you need any. Okay?
I have a question.
Sir?
So I just wasn't clear when, when you mentioned signatures, were you saying it would be difficult for you to obtain signatures?
Oh, not at all.
Okay.
Not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, we're pretty, we're the grandparents in the neighborhood. You know, there's a lot of young families in there. And it's funny, they're like, oh, the old people at the end, we don't care about them. They're nice and quiet. And it's funny, the kids say, oh, that was nice of the old lady to give us a big candy bar at Halloween. So we are, there are a lot of little kids in the neighborhood. They all play in the court. We love it. I mean, that's the whole point of us being there, is the family and the community. So we'd just like you guys to take that in consideration, hopefully that this will get us worked out. And I'd be happy to assist in any way I can. All right?
One more question?
I'm sorry, how long, how long ago did you purchase that?
It's been almost a year.
Oh, okay. And it just came out this...
Yeah. Yeah, it's been sitting. So, any other questions?
No.
Thanks for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Peter Aranda.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. I have a similar situation, actually, than the one that was just described, is that my wife and I have purchased a vehicle that we've had for about a year. And we recently were told that the regulations that we were given by the dealership where we purchased it were older ones and weren't the ones that actually applied in the city. One of the problems that hasn't been mentioned that we've run into isn't necessarily a willingness to comply, but the ability to do so. So it was about four different places I had to call before I found one single space in the city, in the general area that had room for a trailer. It was near the end of the evening, so the owner thankfully said, I'll hold it for you, but you need to be in here before lunch tomorrow. I arrived within twenty minutes of the place opening, and they already had ten other people on a waiting list for that one space, which may very well be some of the people that are... of the people that are on active violations. So that does create a problem also, is if you want to comply, there isn't necessarily a way for you to comply easily, because there's nowhere to store the vehicle. Also, you have the monthly hardship of having to, you know, pay an additional cost that you weren't necessarily counting on. What I'd like to propose for the council to do is to look at the guideline, and let's make some reasonable changes that can accommodate some of these things. Nobody wants a hitch that's hanging over the sidewalk that's impeding right-of-way. We've all heard stories of someone walking their dog and tripping on that. You don't want a trailer to look like the old Chevy on blocks, sitting on the lawn, either that becomes a blight to the neighborhood, or it being used as additional living space, or someone, you know, renting it to someone which they shouldn't be doing. But we do already have codes that deal with things like blight, right-of-way, housing, that could be used to enforce that. If we made a reasonable change, whereas your vehicle had to be parked on your property on a paved surface that is properly sloped, that is properly drained, so that there's no problems with that, is not impeding your neighbors, is off the city sidewalk for right-of-way, then you would be allowed, should be allowed to do so. If any other issues come up, then existing codes can deal with that, like I said, like living in it, or if it becomes a blight. This will then allow people, which could help, take vehicles that can meet those requirements out of storage, and it would open up those spaces to larger vehicles, or vehicles that would know, you know, that don't meet the regulations. And also, of course, we'd want to make it so that you don't park in the street. A recreational vehicle should not be permanently left in the street. So I just want you guys, if you would consider that, just some reasonable changes in the code that would give more flexibility to owners of these vehicles, and still allow us to try to keep harmony in the neighborhood. Any questions?
Questions? No?
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Seeing that, that there are no additional speakers signed, I want to close public comment, want to open to council deliberation and direction.
Mayor, members of the council, I can't help but notice how we're approaching 10:00. I think maybe the clerk has some...
We have a motion to move 10:00 rule. I have a second.
Staff also did look at the remaining items in the balance of the agenda, and we did note that for items 10-6 for the HPC, we could move that with staff scheduling to the March 22 meeting, as well as the last two items, 10-7 and 10-8, that being the norms and procedures, and appointments to regional boards, we could move those as well to the March 8 meeting.
Do we have anyone signed up to speak on the HPC?
I do have one speaker, but is Gary still in the audience?
Both the HPC members left.
Okay, I think they did.
Based on, and they checked their calendar, and the 22nd was the next time they could attend.
Okay. Then I would make, move to make those changes to the agenda.
Got a motion, second, all in favor? I oppose,赞成. All right, got it. Deliberation on this item. Vice Mayor?
Sure.
Councilmember Hume?
We've, we spent some pretty labor-intensive time on this, what, about four years ago?
It was exactly five years ago today.
Five, oh, really? Five years ago today?
Yes, sir.
And I know we exhausted all the different options, and it's been a pretty good model for the last five years. I'm very, very concerned when you start making exceptions, and it's gonna make your job a lot harder, Shane. That's, and I think it's a matter of being consistent. As I brought up earlier, and I think I may have brought up in the past, people have recorded CCNRs on their, on their properties, and for us to put something in place that would be contradictory, those CCNRs, I think is, it's not, I don't think it's right. And I think that, you know, the rules are put in place for a reason, and part of it's aesthetic for the city, that, you know, the kind of look and feel that we want to have in our neighborhoods when people drive around, that there's not motor homes, boats, trucks, parked in the driveways like that. So I support keeping things the way we currently have them from five years ago today.
So just to make things fun, if I may, Mayor, I'm gonna go the exact opposite way, and, you know, five years ago, I fought a lot to get the grandfathering in for the folks that had grown accustomed to having it that way. And I think, do you hear the people that spoke tonight, and looking at the table that Shane put together, we have some of the most restrictive requirements of any jurisdiction in the region, other than, say, the city of Sacramento, but most of them, as long as it's operable, currently registered and in good condition, and on a paved surface, it's permissible. So that's the way I would go. I would be leaning.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, I think the way they're written is, I mean, I don't, I don't have knowledge of the previous, but I don't see, actually, I don't see ours being too bad right now, but I'll go back to try to find, dealing with the exceptions rather than dealing with the rule, because I don't, like, or Vice Mayor said, the rule seems to have worked for at least the last five years. And, you know, I'll go back to my proposal about if, if the neighbors around aren't complaining about the issue, and if you look at this, these pictures here, you can, you know, you can barely see the, in this example, you can barely see the RV at all, unless you actually live what looks like, you know, this looks like a cul-de-sac, so if you're living in that cul-de-sac. So the people that they're impacting or affecting is the neighbors. So if the neighbors were okay with, with the situation, then should, unless there's a public safety issue, should the city really, you know, have a, have a concern? Rhetorical question.
Number one?
My understanding is that the only reason why it became an issue is because somebody did complain about it, right? Otherwise, nobody would have known it was there. And I think she had made the comment also, is that, do we do a sweep of the entire neighborhood? And it's, no, it's just on that, that house. I, I'd have to agree with Councilmember Hume, is that, as I was listening to them, and they're struggling to find a location to even store it, I don't know to what extent, if there's anything nearby or not, but I looked at the pictures as well, and it doesn't look like it was in any way impeding into the walkway, or that it was visible. But I will say that if a neighbor had an issue with it and brought it up, that, that it is an issue, right, and that the rules and regulations are in place. But I'm wondering if there is a way in which we can, and I don't know if we change this, that other things will come up as well, too. Then we'll start getting other folks that will come up and start saying, well, my RV has this, and my RV has that, and we may be here at every meeting discussing something like this, and...
If I can just add, so, you know, first of all, she, she actually said it would be fine if she could get signatures. So if it was, if it was somebody directly adjacent to her, then I don't think she would be so willing. And secondly, when you, and I think, just going back to my own HOA, I don't have to get permission from the guy that, the person that lives three houses down at the end of the cul-de-sac. I only have to get permission from my immediate neighbors, front and back. So if, you know, we would, it would be restrictive in that way. Otherwise, anybody just driving down the street can be opposed of, you know, going back to the house, the way my front yard looks, or, you know, what color my house is painted. So that, I don't think we should make it so, I mean, basically, what we're saying is, the people that would be most greatly affected by the people that are living directly around you, if they're okay with it, then, you know, this, you know, we'll leave them alone. But if they're, if they're, you know, if they're, if the people directly adjacent to them is, have concerns, and that's, that's where, you know, the code, the code kicks in. So it wouldn't apply to just somebody just driving by, which it, I'm inferring that maybe that's what happened, not, she seemed to be open to getting signatures from around her. So anyway, I just throw that out there for consideration.
Councilmember Soon, and actually, members of the council, I do want to clarify something so that you have a better understanding as to how the complaints work or don't work. We do not require that a complainant be a neighbor. Anybody in the city, or anybody in period, could file a complaint. And we do take anonymous complaints, and we do find at times that we get complaints in batches. I don't know specifically to the cases we're talking about tonight, but there are times where someone will call code enforcement, and they'll say, here's four addresses where there, you know, whatever the case may be. And so the, I wouldn't want you to infer that because a complaint was received, that it was necessarily directly because of a direct neighbor or someone right there. It could conceivably be anyone in the, in the public that would see it and report it.
Okay. My, my thought here is, look, we put rules and regulations in place, and if it's not, you know, serving its first purpose, then, you know, we have to amend it accordingly. I hear the concerns of the two speaker, one with Ms. Pippit, and in the photographs, which she submitted, it seems pretty clear and non-intrusive. In addition to that, Mr. Peter Aranda also brought up issues in terms of, if we wanted to be in compliance, how do we solve it? And so now, we're in a dilemma, because we're gonna put these restrictions, but we don't have anything to assist them in being compliant. That being the case, I would be in supportive of the recommendation by Councilman Hume. And to Councilman Soon's suggestion, my only concern with that is, there's gonna be a lot of flexibility, and that being the case, we have rules in place, I'd rather have something that will be blanked, and it'll be clean, so it'll be easily applied. You know, and I hear the Attorney Hobbs's suggestion about being able to handle it, but my thoughts here, if it's an ordinance, we gotta make sure that's clean, and it's applied across the board. So...
I want to add, so Councilman Hume, what was, what was your suggestion again? Sorry.
My suggestion, sorry, my suggestion would be to model it like one of the other cities. I'll see if I can find one quickly. Citrus sites, for example, allowed to be parked in front and stride, and street side yards, if operable, on paved driveways leading directly from permitted curb cuts, and contained entirely on the private property. So there's one. Vehicles need current registration and operable condition and parked on approved parking surfaces. Allows boat and RV parking as long as they're operable and do not encroach on the sidewalk. So I guess the, the idea being is that it has to be a, in good condition, functional, registered, operable, on paved surface, off-city setbacks. You know, I mean, and I guess for me, I appreciate the creativity of what you came up with, Darren, but, you know, when we have instances of stray bullets going into neighbors' houses, and we have our code enforcement officers trying to track down whether or not somebody got signatures to put an RV on their driveway, that just seems a little off-kilter to me.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the other side of it, though, how, so I appreciate this one, too, but if you, in terms of operability, so how long do, if they only drive their RV, maybe they only take it once, once a year or something, then we, the onus is on the neighbor or someone to prove that it's, it is indeed operable, or is that...
Counsel, if, and I've kind of been keeping score, if your preference is to repeal this section, that this standard, and the concern then with the, we have ordinances on the books to ensure that vehicles are operable, parked on paved surfaces, currently registered, not blocking sidewalks, you know, those various things. We have other codes that cover all of those things I've mentioned so far, in, either in the zoning code, in our Title 10 parking code, or in the nuisance code, that cover a number of those things. And so if you chose to repeal this, code enforcement would still apply those other standards like they would any other vehicle parked in a driveway. And we have standards we use to determine that the vehicle is operable, meaning that it's registered, can be driven on the street, the tires are aired up, it's not parked so long that it's, you know, got dust and cobwebs coming from the tires to the ground, those sorts of things are all tools that we currently use to enforce those standards.
That, is that, is that a, how much of a resource or effort is that?
It's manageable within our current, within our current staffing, and we, we handle the inoperable vehicles cases pretty regularly. It's one of the primary things we do, and there's not much tasking there.
So it sounds like the action that would essentially be needed is a repeal of this ordinance, and then the other codes would...
I personally won't support that. As I mentioned, one of the things, we're trying to raise the bar of the city. This lowers the bar. And to address Peter's comment about the owner, the owner of the place where you bought your RV from gave you bad information, it's unfortunate. I just, I mean, I grew up, where I grew up, it was Wild, Wild West. You had boats, trailers, RVs, and it degrades the look of the city. If you guys want to degrade that, that's fine, but I won't support that.
Okay.
That's it. I was gonna ask a question, and I just lost my train of thought. Sorry.
Anything else? Do you have enough? One more.
I think you'll need a motion and a vote. So I'll move what Shane said.
Wait, 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 wait. So are you, are we repealing the...
Can I give it a shot? I think I understand what at least three of you guys want to do. So I wouldn't work too much in terms of what's being repealed, what's not. Let's see if we can just kind of get general direction on what the council wants to do. And what I think I heard from at least three of you, is that the standard should be that you have the vehicle be operable, the way Shane has described that, and then it'd be on a paved surface. And we can craft a code around that. We'll come up with the language and bring it back to you, and you'll formally vote on that. In the meantime, if you want, we'll suspend enforcement of the current code. Is that roughly what at least three of you were talking about? That work with me?
Well, I, I'm not sure how lax I want to go here, because I appreciate what Council, Vice Mayor, the Vice Mayor's saying, too. So that's why I, I'd like to see what exactly we're, we're looking to change. And then I just remembered, sorry, John, I just remembered my question. Do, does the dealership, or at least the Elk Grove Auto Mall, anyway, have our latest standard? That, do we provide that to dealerships when we, when we make these changes? Is that...
We don't proactively provide those. I can tell you that the municipal code is updated online, and any of the dealerships that sought it out would find the most recent version of our code at all times, published on our webpage. We don't provide any sort of code language, or handouts, or guidance, or anything to the dealerships.
But we can. That's what you want to do. It's not a hard thing to do.
I know, I don't think it's hard. And I think, you know, Elk Grove Auto Mall, where, hopefully, it's our, a lot of our residents go in there, it would be doing them a service.
So I have another question for Shane. So you said, how many? There was 500, how many cases? 500?
512 since the February 2012 meeting.
Okay, so including these 12, another 524?
Including these 12. There, so there's 512 total.
And what would you guess the number of violations are out there that we're not enforcing right now?
There's a few more than 512. I would want to take a guess at...
Well, I'm getting at, right?
But the 512...
This potentially puts us 1,000, 2,000 vehicles sitting out in front of homes.
Yes, I would say there's far more in violation we don't receive complaints on than ones we do receive complaints on. Yeah.
Councilmember Soon, to address your point, you'd like to see the specific language. I agree with you. I want the council to see the specific language. We don't have that tonight, of course, because we didn't know what you wanted to do, but it will come back. And if you're happy with it, you can vote it up or down at that point. What we're trying to do tonight, of course, is just kind of get a general idea of what the council is looking for.
So I'll make another suggestion, then, to take a look at what, you know, what else is here, and given the complaints that we have, knowing the violations that we have, do your best to try to find something that is accommodating, or at least, you know, walks the line, and then we can decide from there.
Okay. Let's do that. Sounds good? Got enough?
I don't know. Can I give it another shot? Let me, let me suggest a motion, and if somebody wants to make that motion, you can, you can pick it up and run with it. But I think the motion that you might want to consider is, a motion directing staff to bring back a code amendment that would provide that if RVs are operable and on paved surfaces, then they can stay where they are, and we don't have this grandfather anymore. And you direct staff to hold on any enforcement pending the new ordinance, or further council direction, whichever occurs first.
Well, then I'll add in there, unless you can meet the, these, you know, the current code. In other words, I go, I'll go back to, we've got some strict HOAs in my neighborhood. But if you can fit the car in the garage, if you have a three-car garage, you, and you have three cars, then you, you need to have those, those cars all in the garage, right? So if we...
Your CCNRs.
Per CCNR, sorry.
So that would be a private restriction that the city wouldn't enforce? So that would be a private restriction that the city wouldn't enforce.
Okay. All I'm saying, yeah, but just along those lines, if there's a way to, because I don't think we should just accommodate everybody, but if there's a way to, if there's a way to ensure that what the intent of the current code in place, if you can meet those requirements, then allow that to be governed, and then, you know, then if it's longer or something, then it needs to be operable as a secondary tier.
I'm not sure I understand, because the current code basically says that you have to move the vehicle every 72 hours. You can't park it out in the street. What I think I'm hearing suggested by at least some council members is that so long as a vehicle is operable and on a paved surface, you don't have to keep moving it every 72 hours. It can be parked there. And then, of course, if there are more restrictive CCNRs in the community you live in, you're going to have to comply with those separately. The city wouldn't enforce those. That'd be a private restriction upon the property. So if, for instance, you had a CCNR that says you can't have your RV in the front yard, and when you bought your house, you accepted that, you signed off on that, you'd have to comply with that. That would be a more strict requirement.
Okay.
And there's probably a lot of those, I'm sure there's a lot of those in the city. I know there are. But from the city's perspective, from a code enforcement governmental perspective, the only thing that we would enforce is if it's inoperable, it's not on a paved surface, under what we're suggesting, the proposed code that we're talking about now.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll make that motion.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
Got a second? All right, is that enough? Do you want an actual vote? Yes? All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye. No?
Pose. No? Well, no. Abstention? None.
Just a reminder, I'm not going to go, I don't want to go opposite CCNRs. That's not a good idea.
Okay. All right. Next item.
That'll take us on to item 10.4, which is to receive an update regarding the status of projects along the Capital Southeast Connector.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Rick Carter, your Capital Program Manager. Presentation tonight, we'll discuss the status of projects along the Capital Southeast Connector. It's a 34-mile corridor, stretches from the I-5 Hood-Franklin interchange, sort of the west, sort of west corner of the city, all the way up into El Dorado County at the Silver Valley Parkway interchange. My part of the presentation, I will discuss projects that are wholly or partially within the city. But before I present those, I'm going to invite Tom Zlatkowski, who is the Executive Director of the Capital Southeast Connector, JPA, of which we're a member, to discuss the projects that are outside of the city limits, as well as projects that they are leading within the city. And after that, we'll take any questions you have. At this point, I'd invite Tom to come up.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tom Zlatkowski from the Capital Southeast Connector Joint Powers Authority. Thank you for inviting me down to speak this evening. It's been a while since I've been back, and maybe some of you don't even have a limited knowledge of the project, while others are quite familiar with it. So throughout the years, I think I've heard many times, I have a few quick slides, but literally, I only have a few quick slides, so put yourself at ease. But this first one is just an overall alignment profile. And as you can see, it starts, as Rick mentioned, down on Camera Road in blue. And as we move to the northeast, we change the colors just to designate what we call segments. It follows Grantline Road exclusively all the way to White Rock up in Ranch Cordova, and then transitions east-west, more east-west, and the south line of Folsom, and then moves into El Dorado County. That's 34 miles, and it represents at least, in the first phase of construction, four lanes, approximately $355 million worth of work. Second phase, which will come later, would add some additional lanes beyond the four lanes where necessary, and would transition some of the intersections that become congested into interchanges. Most of those occur in the area of the expressway portion, which is east of Calvine Road. So about 17 miles is expressway. The rest of it is a form of urban expressway or urban arterial, four and six lanes. As I said, we have designations A, B, C, D, and E, which move from Elk Grove up to El Dorado. And Rick will talk a little bit later about the work that the city is pursuing exclusively. But we have been partnering with the city on a number of areas, and vis-à-vis, the city has partnered with the JPA. And I'll give you a quick update on some of the segments that the JPA is currently active in, or projects that have been completed. So some of those in Elk Grove are the B2 section. As you can see, the B section has been broken into three segments. Many of these areas, when we intended to do the A, B, C, D, and E, were just to maintain momentum. But those were at a time when there was a little bit more transportation funding available. So the subsegmenting, as we call it, is a form of just the fact that you can't build it all at one time. You have to break it down into manageable pieces, either for environmental review, but most likely, in most cases, it's because the funding is just not available. So what we have here is a demonstration of what we've done to segment these, to make them into these subsegments that can be pursued. Now, currently underway by the JPA are three segments that include about 11 miles of the connector, and they're in one form or another. And Rick will talk about the other five miles that are being pursued by the county, by the city. And that represents almost 50% of the lane miles or length of the connector, which is an admirable amount of work under construction, given the enormity of the task. Of most interest to the city at this point probably is the B2 section, which is Mozier Road to Bradshaw Road. And that's a little bit more than a mile, and it's currently in the environmental phase, which will be completed this spring. As a matter of fact, on Friday, at our JPA Board Meeting, we'll be asking the Board to authorize the release of the environmental document for public review. Following that, and hopefully a successful adoption of that document in May or April or May, we'll go to final design and be ready, be shovel-ready, hopefully by sometime in 2018. So that's, started that process last year with a creative swap between the city and the county, very good creative swap, where we traded some Mejore money to the city for some federal funds that the city had received from SECOG. And now we're both proceeding jointly on a project adjacent to each other. City is pursuing the first half of that B2 piece, which is between Waterman and Mozier. Rick can probably talk a little bit about that. But it was a nice symmetry that we created between the JPA and the city. So hopefully shovel-ready by next year. And if federal funds or even local funds become available, we'll put that to work right on that segment. D2 is a large piece, that's a seven-mile piece, and that's adjacent to Ranch Cordova between Jackson Highway going up to the completed section on White Rock Road. That was done in 2014 by Sacramento County with state bond funds. That seven miles is also in environmental review. And that environmental review, that document will be released in May, and it'll go through the same review process, public review process. And then hopefully, we'll be able to start design of that segment sometime in the fall. But that, the design of that segment comes with a higher price tag, given that it's seven miles and not just one mile. So we do have some issues probably with dealing with that, but it's still, the intent is to have that shovel-ready as well for opportunities that come along on federal funding. And then the last segment that is active is the D3E1 segment. And that is the piece that's south of Folsom, between Folsom and Sacramento County. And we already have environmental clearance on that, and we've started the final design process. And unfortunately, the money that we were anticipating coming from the state has been hung up, as much of the funding that you and the city have been anticipating. And it's forced us to truncate that process, that segment down into two pieces. So we are now pursuing a construction contract on the first half of that, which is about two miles from Prairie City Road to Scott Road. Total construction cost of that segment is $44 million, but we're only going to pursue about a $17 million piece, which will hopefully go to construction sometime in 2018, early 2019. It depends upon the process that we work with and the price that we come up with a contractor, that the contractor gives us as he moves through his, working with the designer. So those are the three pieces, 11 miles. It's a nice amount of work. We're trying to balance out construction with being shovel-ready and also to administer the JPA as well. It's nice to see that we have a number of pieces that have been constructed. As I said, Silver Valley Parkway interchange was just finished by El Dorado, in El Dorado Hills, by El Dorado County. That was last year. White Rock, as I mentioned before, was constructed by Sacramento County in 2014. And the city did both the Grantline interchange in 2009, as well as just completing the widening of the railroad bridge east of 99, which were great compliments to the overall alignment. We thank you for that. This looks more complicated than I think we all want to get into at this hour, but there are a number of pieces that you can see on the chart that are designated for city projects, and those are the ones that Rick will talk to. The blue boxes represent environmental and preliminary engineering. The orange boxes represent final design, and the green, or the, yeah, the green represents either projects that are constructed or will about to go to construction. And you could see a number of the boxes, the majority of the boxes are in the blue category, which is environmental review and preliminary engineering. Some of them are in the orange, which is actually doing final design and right-of-way acquisition and permitting. And then a few of them, as I mentioned, have already been constructed. So we see over the next two years, if you move that era, that line over to 2018, you've got some completion process that are shovel-ready projects, ready for construction funding. And then you've got others that are either in the final design stage or in just the initial stage of environmental review and initial design. So as I promised, and in my word, that's all the slides I have. And I'd be happy to answer questions you have now of JPA work, or wait till Rick does his, and we could tag-team a discussion of some of the aspects that I present or Rick presents.
Okay. Questions? Nope, no questions.
All right. I like that. Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
So I'm going to fairly quickly run through the projects that are within the city, following with Tom's map and the segments. So Segment C is between Calvine and Bond Road. The scope of that work is, again, four-lane widening and intersection improvements. I think an important aspect of the scope in this area is that it is a reduced access road. Basically, what that means is with the project, many of the left-turn movements, both in and out of properties along that section, would be eliminated, and driveways would be consolidated as much as feasible. Kind of the genesis for that is originally looking at the traffic through there. It was sized as a six-lane facility, but because it's through Sheldon, it had greater impacts, and the preference of that community was to do the work to eliminate those movements and allow for a narrower road. So the work that we're currently doing is preparing a precise roadway plan. The citizens had come before the council a couple of years back, basically stating they knew that the project was coming, but they didn't know where the road would be in that area. There's about 95 properties that front the road, and they had concerns about installing fences, replacing wells, installing or replacing septic systems, and they wanted some kind of certainty. So what we're doing now, again, is preparing that precise roadway plan. It will define the extent of the roadway and the right-of-way limits to account for the ditches. It'll allow preservation of right-of-way with any development that comes through, also allow us to identify setbacks for work. What it is not, is it's not project-level environmental or design plans. Where we are with that project, traffic analysis is done, survey roadway work is done. There's some difficulties trying to fit the trail, the Class 1 trail, Equestrian Trail that are identified, the master plan through there. So staff's still working through those difficulties. We also have a drainage analysis underway so that we can identify the limits of the drainage system and set the right-of-way. As I mentioned, there's about 95 parcels that front that. There's also, we have a list of about 400 contacts, because besides the people that front, you have all the side roads. And when you eliminate left-turn movements, it affects those people. So we're having all those conversations. So we've held a large number of workshops and public outreach. The next steps on this project is, there's more project, more public outreach. Have to complete the engineering and then go back and meet with property owners again. Ultimately, this will come before the planning commission, city council, and the JPA for adoption as a precise roadway plan. The design, right-of-way, and construction are not in the city's five-year CIP. The JPA has assumed that they would start environmental and PE work in about 2019. The next segment is Bond to Bradshaw. Again, it's four-lane, as Tom mentioned, as well as intersection improvements. This is not funded in the city's five-year plan. There's no near-term plans for the city to take any action on this. The JPA is assuming they'll start work on this in 2018. Tom mentioned the Section B2 the city's working on between Mozier and Waterman. It's also four-lane, looking at intersection improvements at Mozier. This fronts the Sports Complex property that the city owns. SEQA has been completed on that. The design phase has recently been started. We have a consultant onboard for this. It happens, turns out, that the most qualified consultant was the consultant that is doing the adjacent piece for the JPA. So we're going to have good coordination between the two designs that abut each other. It is fully funded for construction. Tom mentioned the funding swap that we did, looking to begin construction in 2018. And Tom mentioned projects that were completed in 2005. We completed the road widening and the grade separation. In 2009, the Grantline interchange was completed. The last segment is Segment A, it's Camera Road. I don't, I didn't, basically I omitted the details of that project from this presentation because it's covered in great detail in the next council item. And with that, Tom and I would be happy to answer any questions council has on any of that.
Questions? No questions? Update is received and filed. Next item.
Look forward to seeing the progress.
Can I just confirm, we don't have any speakers signed up for the last item, which would take us to item 10.5, which is to receive an update on Camera Road project and provide direction regarding phasing options and options to accelerate the schedule.
So this presentation is on Camera Road. Besides providing a general update, looking forward, some direction from the council on phasing, as well as options to accelerate the project. Kind of like the last presentation, it's going to be a little tag-team. I'm going to discuss the project scope and status and the phasing options. And then I will have Kevin Bucy, who's a senior civil engineer with the city. He's been, he was hired a little less than a year ago, and he's been doing consultant oversight on the. oversight on the project for about the last nine months, and he will come up and talk about acceleration options on the project. This area will show the extents of the project. The goals of the project are to provide that vital east-west gap closure that exists along Cammer. We're also looking to improve traffic operations and safety along the existing section of Cammer Road. The project will also support the plan development in the SEPA area. As shown in this diagram, there's actually two alignments that we're looking at environmentally, both a north and a south alignment. The major differences of those deal with right-of-way impacts to residents and properties. The overall project is about five and a half miles long. The portions west of Bruceville would be a new four-lane facility. Portions to the east, depending on the north or south alignment, vary a little bit. The north alignment is a simple widening from two to four lanes of the existing road. If it's the southern alignment, it's kind of split between new four-lane and widening. On the west end, in this vicinity, kind of where the, you can see the red flares out, that is the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. So the project would grade-separate the road there. There's options under consideration, either going under or over the railroad. In addition to that, the project impacts the Hood Franklin interchange. So we have three different interchange layouts that we are obligated to, to take a look at by Caltrans standards. When you look at the north and south alignments going under and over the railroad and the three options at the interchange, what we end up with is twelve different iterations of how this project could come out. From an engineering standpoint, it's actually a fairly straightforward project, except for the railroad crossing. The real complexity comes into the, comes in as a multi-jurisdictional nature of the environmental document and the environmental issues that we have out through that site. The environmental clearance involves three agencies. First is the city, who is funding and implementing the project. The second being Sacramento County. The majority of the land is within the county, and they are the SEQA lead for the environmental document. Originally, the county was set to prepare the environmental document, as well as certify it, but partway through the development of the document, they had resource issues and asked the city to take over preparation of the document. But they have retained SEQA lead status and review authority for that document. Third partner with that is Caltrans. The project has about four million of federal funds now, so they serve as the NEPA, the NEPA lead. As well, the, the project also impacts the interchange, as I mentioned, so they're involved in the design issues related to that. In addition to those three, we are coordinating with the connector JPA on the design standards, so we have design consistency along the connector alignment. Because of those partnerships with the county and Caltrans, it adds a level of complexity to this. As the certifying agencies, they continuously vet the decisions that come from the city, and it creates a bit of a cumbersome process. It's also complicated by the number of parcels that are affected. There's about fifty-seven between the north and the south alignments. Most of the parcels are still affected, whether it's north or south, but there is some slight difference. We also have some issues with some Native American cultural resources. The, the original county cultural sub didn't identify them, though they were recorded in the, in the fifties, resulted in a significant delay getting access to a parcel that ultimately we were able to walk the site, but not able to do any investigation. That has added an additional process we're going to have to go through later when we have access to the parcel. In addition to that, as I mentioned, it's got federal funds, so there are requirements for the grant funding that we have to follow. In terms of the status of what's been done to date, we have an approved Caltrans interchange programming document. We've had about seven community meetings on the project. The notice of preparation was done. All twenty-four environmental tech studies required for this project have been completed. The city also prepared administrative draft of the environmental document, had a internal review. The, if you're not familiar with the administrative draft document, it's the internal, it's the internal review that goes to the responsible agencies, including the city, Caltrans, and in this case, the county, for review before that document goes public. During the city review process last month, they identified some concerns with how the alternatives were presented and have advised the staff that there should be some revisions for the twelve altern, or twelve iterations, as well as some changes to the phasing, which gets into some direction I'm seeking on the phasing. In the original document, the phasing had been discussed only generally, in part because of some uncertainty in the funding. And the advice from council has been to do a more detailed discussion of the phasing in the environmental document and get that cleared all at once. So in terms of where we are, this evening, I'm looking for some direction in phasing. I'll get to in a moment. We are actively revising the admin draft for our, for the comments on the twelve iterations. We are preparing a project report that Caltrans requires for the interchange. Also, because of the size of the project and the federal funding, they require, they require a value engineering study. And so we advanced that study, and it's underway and should be completed within the next two weeks. What's left to be done? We need to get the draft environmental document completed and out to the public. We typically hold a public meeting for comments on the draft document. Because the city is not the SEQA lead, our intent is to bring an informational item before the council on what those comments are, so council will be informed, but they won't be certifying the document. I mentioned the cultural resource issue. We have to finalize a cultural management plan and a programmatic agreement and have that approved by SHIPA, which is the state historic preservation office. With the comments from the public, we'll finalize the document. It'll go to the county for SEQA approval, to Caltrans for NEPA approval, and as a responsible agency implementing the project, it will come back to the council for project approval and adoption of the mitigations and the findings that the county makes. So the, the phasing options for the project are really tied with, with the funding. The project estimate right now is about eighty-three million for the whole project. We have about thirty-two million identified funding between city funds and awarded grants through next year, which results in about a fifty-one million dollar shortfall. Of that fifty-one million, about twenty-three million is identified to come from the roadway fee over time. It's programmed into the roadway fee, but we simply don't have those, you know, the development that, that has paid those fees yet. The remaining twenty-eight million is, basically the shortfall has been identified as coming from grants, STA, and the other sources. A couple of the sources for those grants have been discussed over time are Fast Lane and Tiger Grants. The nice thing about those, those are national grants, those awards are fairly large. The Fast Lane Grant, they make awards over fifty million dollars. The Tiger Grant, the last round, the bulk of those were between about ten and twenty million, and they don't fund projects at the fifty-million-dollar level, at least they haven't in the past. The other source of grant funding basically comes through SECOG. We've been a recipient of plenty of SECOG grants, the grants that we have now on the project have come through SECOG. The issue there is they tend to be in a smaller amount. The last go-around, the largest grant they handed out was about seven and a half million. So it's difficult to get the large amount that we're looking for on the project. From prior direction, the CAP has the project broken up essentially into two phases. The first being construction of four, four lanes between Lent Ranch and Bruceville. Estimated cost for that's about twenty million. We have sufficient funds to fully fund that. The second phase would be the four lanes from Bruceville to I-5. It's estimated at sixty-three million, and that fifty-one million dollar shortfall sort of shows up all in that second phase. The benefit to this phasing is it improves the existing section of Cammer Road, and you get good long-term capacity out of those four lanes. That also would provide support for the development in SEPA and that employment area. I believe that this has a number of shortfalls to it, though. If we take the city funds and we build that first phase, it leaves a small amount of city funds left for that second phase, and it makes it less competitive for those larger grants. When I look back at Tiger Grant in particular, most of the projects are funded as local funds, their match is fifty percent or more. So they're looking for a larger contribution from the agencies. It doesn't preclude the possibility of getting grants for that first phase to help offset it, shift those funds. But one of my concerns with this is a four-lane project going from Lent Ranch to Bruceville, it doesn't, it doesn't meet the logical termini that's established in the environmental document and the purpose and need. It kind of gets you halfway there. And I think that ultimately makes that project less competitive for grants, because you're not achieving the connection that's an identified need. My concern with, with this approach is that we end up, that we can fund the first phase, and then the second phase ends up sitting for too long, and we don't get that connection that, that we'd like to make between I-5. The proposed phasing, if the, if the council adopts this, would get incorporated into the environmental document. Would be to construct two lanes from Lent Ranch to, Lent Ranch Parkway to I-5. Initial traffic analysis shows that that would serve ten years or more in terms of traffic life for the planned development in southeast policy area. This is, it's obviously, it's a larger cost, is a longer, a longer project, and we have the grade separation at the railroad. So what we end up with is about a twenty-million-dollar shortfall. The second phase would build the four lanes with the balance of thirty-three million and end up with a thirty-three-million-dollar shortfall. Essentially, what this is doing is kind of splitting the, splitting the grant funding and splitting the projects. I believe the, the benefit for this project is that it, and with the first phase, it creates the I-5 to ninety-nine connection. It fulfills the purpose and need when the project, I think it makes it a much better grant candidate. In addition, discussing this concept with our economic development director, he believes that that connection to I-5 is of greater value to supporting the southeast policy area employment center than a four-lane that, that goes halfway. I think the important thing with this is, as, as a first phase, it would not preclude us, you know, subdividing this if we don't get a, if we are not able to get a grant to build the whole thing and to go from Lent Ranch to Bruceville and approve the existing two-lane road to a, you know, current standard two-lane road that would provide some of that support for the southeast policy area. I think the only real risk in this is that if we move forward with the two-lane and we've get a rapid pace of development and you start to get congestion there without having the funds to pull it to a four-lane. I think it's, it's important to note that with either one of these phasing options, it doesn't preclude our ability to pursue funds for the four-lane. If we're able to get all the funding we need to do a full four-lane, we'd certainly charge ahead with that. So the recommendation is that is to adopt, adopt the two-lane as a first phase, environmentally clear that phase. Again, we, we'd continue to pursue grants, Tiger Grants, other grant funding for the two-lane, and we'd also continue to hunt for those larger grants and whatever opportunities come up for a four-lane. That's the end of, of my piece. I don't know if, if you want to ask questions now, or I can have Kevin come up and talk about acceleration and take all the questions at the end.
Questions?
I believe we have Councilman Hume and Councilman Soon going back to DC to hopefully ensure that we get the full funding.
We'll rattle some cages.
Yeah. I, I didn't mention for the challenge with both the, the Fast Lane and the Tiger Grant funding is they fund less than ten percent of the applications they get, so.
The good news is, though, is that the section from Bruceville to I-5 would probably qualify under their rural community standards, which puts you in a smaller pool of competitiveness.
Yeah. It's true.
I did have one question. You'd mentioned that the recommendation in terms of the second option, is it, your, we are more competitive because there's connectivity between I-5 and ninety-nine?
Yes.
Yeah. It's, it's, one, it's part of the purpose and need of the, of the project, so you can show that you're meeting your purpose and need. And secondly, we have an existing road that only goes halfway, and so widening the existing road that goes halfway is just, if you're reviewing grants, it doesn't sound as good as making this connection that doesn't exist.
Right. Makes sense. Yeah.
I don't know if you need a motion or what. Is there anybody saying it for, nobody saying it for public comment, huh?
And, and I do have, Kevin's got to present his other half.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Kevin.
Totally fine.
Kevin, between you, Tom, and I, it's the reunion of Sac County.
I know, seriously. All right. So I'm going to get into the current schedule, and we're going to talk about schedule acceleration. Based on the current schedule, we're looking at spring 2018 for environmental clearance. Summer 2018 would begin the right-of-way, and winter 2019 would begin construction. I want to press upon you, this is aggressive schedule, requires expeditions reviews, and assumes that we have no more obstacles that would keep us from moving forward. Talk a little bit about prior actions that we've taken to kind of keep the project moving. I've got three items, A, B, and C. Item A, replacement. So we've made a couple of changes in staff. Specifically, Rick talked about it previously, but we replaced the county's cultural consultant because they were being, lack of performance. And now we were able to move that forward a lot quicker with our own consultant. And we also recently replaced the design engineer. There was a lack of key staff availability that was limiting, that, limiting their responsiveness. Some enhancements we've made, we've added a, an oversight consultant on the environmental document to provide, you know, improve overall quality of the document, which we hope, hope will expedite reviews. And then as far as role changes go, Rick also mentioned this previously, the city took over preparation of the environmental document from the county. Gives us a little more control. Item B, project management improvements. We've actually changed the PM recently. We, we're going with a PM that's a little more schedule-driven. We had a good PM before, but this, this person, this individual is much more schedule-driven and will keep the project moving faster. We've also gone with a, accelerated our meeting schedule, so we were meeting monthly to every two weeks. Now we're meeting weekly. Essentially, what we're trying to do is keep everyone accountable, make sure that they're following up on their action items and keep things moving. Items, and item C, we are continuing to look for opportunities for any real estate opportunities for active sellers or tax default properties that might benefit the project. And as far as advancement, Rick also talked about this, we've advanced the value engineering study, get, make sure that we're delivering a quality product. So schedule acceleration options, there's five of these. Item one, we're going to really look at advancing the design and pre-acquisition activities. Essentially, there's, we want to get the project far enough along that by the time we get through environmental, we can finalize appraisals and make offers. Typically, we would wait and get all the way through there and then make any final designs, start the appraisal, and then go right into acquisition. So there's two ways of handling this. We've got an option 1A and an option 1B. Option 1A, essentially, we advance design on both alignments to, so that we can get going on right-of-way much faster. Potentially could reduce the schedule up to six months, but there's a cost of about one-point-five million that we're looking at, because we're designing two alignments and we're only going to build one of them. And then we've got option 1B is where we have, the alignments are, have common features. There's, there's probably twenty, thirty percent of the, of the alignments are the same, or they, at the conformes. We could advance the design of those elements. That would potentially reduce the schedule by about two months. I think we would be able to essentially make offers or finalize appraisals and make offers after environmental on about thirty percent of the property owners. So that's a, that's a benefit there. There is a cost to that because there are some There is a cost to that, because there are some shared, we'd have to do some additional survey and hydraulics, and we wouldn't be able to, that would apply to both alter, alignments. So, that's the cost there, lost of that. So, those are options 1A, 1B. Options 2, 3, and 4. So, option 2 would be the city would lead all the right-of-way acquisition with, using an MOU with the county, allow us to have more control of the right-of-way, right-of-way acquisition process, allow us to prioritize what parcels we really wanted to go after. Rick mentioned before, we have some parcels that we want to get on earlier than others, do some, finalize some cultural resource studies. And then, we've got item 3, which is engage the management of lead agencies. What we're really trying to do is, you know, make sure that it's clear to the management of the agencies that we're working with, specifically the county and Caltrans, that this is really a priority for the city, and we want to make sure that their staff is, you know, providing expeditious reviews. And we think this will overall improve the schedule consistency, so we're not looking at long durations in review. And the fourth item I have here is building community support. We want to reach out to the property owners and the community, make sure they're aware of the project, make sure, we've already done this, we want to do this some more. Essentially, understand their issues, so that when we get to the end of this thing and we're actually talking about acquiring right-of-way, we, we understand their concerns, and we've already looked at addressing them, we can move, move through that process faster. And the fifth option we have is aggressively pursuing resolutions of necessity. So, what we typically do is we make an offer, and then we wait 60 to 90 days, and if we're, we can then file a resolution necessity. But in this option, we would file resolution necessity within, right at around 30 days, so we could get, get things moving. The challenge with this option is that potentially could create a lot of litigation. And if a parcel is fully litigated, it could be up to $250,000 per parcel. The other, the other challenge is it can create a lack of goodwill with the property owners. And this also implies that the project is fully funded, and we couldn't use this tool unless the project was fully funded. So, the recommendations that we have are item 1B, we advance the common features. We can start right-of-way earlier on those items, once we, once we're through environmental. Item 2, which would be, the city would lead all the right-of-way acquisitions with that MOU I was talking about. Three, engage the management of lead agencies to get those expeditious reviews that we, we need. And four is building community support. Items 1A and 5 are not recommended right now. There are options to look at, but they are not currently recommended. That's it.
Okay. Questions? No? No question? Got one of them.
Kevin, so thank you for that presentation. I just want to, in terms of the schedule reduction, option 1A, how confident are you that's a six-month, that's a real six-month reduction?
That kind of implies that right-of-way is the critical path, and there are a lot of other agreements we need to get in place. So, we were looking at an 18, 18-month right-of-way process. We could potentially get that down to 12 months, but there's some challenges, because we also need to get a UPR agreement. We also need to get several permits. One of the, one of the big concerns is the individual 404 permit that we required. So, we could, you know, we could accelerate the right-of-way, but there's a lot of other permitting processes that would need to, need to take place in that agreement.
But the UPR requirement is for both, both 1A and 1B, right? So...
Yeah.
Are you...
This is true.
Does the, so does UP become a critical path if, in that scenario, or...
A lot of the things can become critical path if we don't get in front of them. So, that's, I mean, that's the intent, is we're going to try to get in front of these items, make sure they don't become critical path. But it's a complex project, there's a lot of moving parts, so that's the, the challenge is trying to balance all these and get through all these items, so...
So, so the six-month reduction is, you're, it's a, it's a...
It would reduce right-of-way, we, we think it would reduce the overall time to acquire right-of-way, but the concern would be that, once we have acquired a right-of-way, we're still not able to build construction, because we're waiting on finalizing a UPR agreement or an individual 404 permit. Individual 404 permits can take a long time, so we'd have to, we'd have to really watch that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. No? No questions? At this time, I want to open to public comment. Seeing that there are no speaker, I want to close public comment. Open to council deliberation and direction.
I'll move staff's recommendation.
Got a motion?
I'll second that, but I'd, I'd like to throw another option on the table that I, I don't know that it exists, but to the extent it does or can, that we explore what carrots and sticks we can put in front of MBI to ratchet up their work on the environmental and see if they can't shave, you know, even a month.
Just to respond, we have been working with MBI. We've actually looked at making some changes, but we're going to push them pretty hard to finish up the environmental document, and that's, we've brought in another firm, Dachin, to help ensure that the product is, is a quality product, so we're not having to rework it again. So, we're working along those lines, and, and we see that issue as well.
Okay.
Actually, I just want to throw something out. You know, for, because time is incredibly important to us, we can gain most of our delay back six months for a 5% increase in cost. And if you look at the option 1A and 1B, you're paying $200,000, or, did I read that right? I just thought of something, maybe I didn't read that right.
It was $200,000 for approximately two months, or 1.5 for six months.
That's right. So, so, yeah, all right, never mind. So, you're paying $250,000 a month. So, it's a 5% increase in costs, but we achieve, or we're, we're theoretically able to get most of the, this lost time back.
The only thing I would caution is, as, as Staff said, it's a very complicated project. We may gain in, in right-of-way, and we may lose dealing with UP or with the core. And so, that's one reason we didn't recommend it, is we're basically doing work we're going to throw away by designing two, designing two routes and defining the right-of-way for those two routes.
And that's what I was wondering, in, in your schedule, if you reduce design time, does, does the UP permit become your critical path?
It might. It depends. I mean, it's, it's difficult to say, as we sit here right now, be able to say what's going to be the critical path item. Right-of-way generally would be, and I'd like to be able to say, yep, we could save six months on the project critical path. But because of the other moving pieces and dealing with Caltrans and the core and the county and everything else, we're going to do our best to expedite everything. And if everything went the way it should, right-of-way would be the critical path. But I don't know I can say that definitively right now.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Bob. So, with, with that uncertainty, then, then I withdraw.
Okay. Got a motion second? All in favor? Aye. Pose? Extention? Done. All right. Let's adjourn the meeting. 11:02.